Good evening. The date is Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four, and it is five thirty P M. And we'll be starting our work session, and we will start with a city update from Mr. Brian McCain, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, ma'am. The Pueblo Police Department announces the expansion of the Real Time Crime Center with the City of Pueblo Community Connect Program. The program aims to provide greater safety and security in neighborhoods and businesses throughout the city. Citizens and businesses can now integrate their privately owned cameras into the RTCC with voluntary opt-in to varying levels of program integration. The first level allows the RTC, RTCC, to simply know their locations. In the event of an incident, the RTCC will be able to send an email to the registered camera owners in the area requesting video footage. The cameras will not be continuously monitored, only used in the case of an incident reported. Camera installation and registration can be found on pueblo.us on the City of Pueblo Community Connection Program tab. Pueblo Parks and Rec, registered by December nineteenth for lifeguard certification with Pueblo Parks and Recreation from January second to the fourth, is South High School. Registration is a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and you could register online by phone or in person, either at pueblo.us aquatics or at seven one nine five five three two seven nine zero. Family movie night on Friday, December twentieth at El Centro, free and open to the public. The movie starts at six fifteen P M. In the multipurpose room concessions will be open. And just a reminder that Public Transit is launching the Free Rides for All Veterans on buses and city lift beginning January first, two thousand and twenty five. Go to our website on the pueblo.us purchase transit passes tab, or you could go to one twenty-three Court Street or three fifty Ellen Hamel Avenue, or call seven one nine five five three two seven one one. We want to see as many veterans as possible sign up for it, and that concludes my update.
Alrighty, thank you. Anything from Council? Counselor Martinez?
So this morning I was walking my dog on the Arkansas River Trail by the kayak park, and there was a bunch of company like clearing trees. Are we doing that, or is the Conservancy District doing that?
I honestly don't know, but I could find out and let you know.
That would be great, because it lived, it spanned almost from where the drops are all the way to the Union Bridge. Like, and it was that whole area. And I think that they were just clearing out dead trees, but anyway, it would be interesting to know if it, I wanted to know if it was us or them, and why.
Alright.
Thanks, Brian.
I'll listen.
I don't have anything.
You have none?
No.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, alright, we'll get into our first guest, and that will be the Energy Advisory Commission update with Mr. George Andrews and Tyler Surratt.
I wanted to do a little preface to this. I'm Ken Dante, the Chair of the Energy Commission. And I just wanted to talk briefly before George and Tyler get started about the net zero fire stations. The net zero fire stations will save the city over the lifetime of their, of their building. And they're designed to be energy efficient, and energy is a big cost in any building we build. There's also a performance measurement piece to these buildings that will happen to make sure that they, they operate as planned. We also, in the, in the city, have a net zero jail being built. I think these net zero buildings will be the gem of the city building stock. And they will save money in the long run. I just wanted to reinforce that. As that, they may add a little cost upfront, but when you're building a building, that's the time to, to, to do it right. Anyway, I'll let George and Tyler do the, do the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm George Andrews, the staff liaison to the Energy Advisory Commission, working out of Public Works for the City of Pueblo. This is Tyler Surratt, a member of the Energy Advisory Commission, as well as the owner of Steel City Solar. We're here tonight to advocate for keeping the renewable energy goal of the city by highlighting examples of what makes sense while addressing potential concerns and misconceptions. As you're all aware, the community is experiencing the problem of rising energy costs. I'd like your help identifying what's important to this community. If it's saving money, creating jobs, or ensuring energy security, with renewables, the city can have all three.
That works. I'm speaking.
Before we begin, let's first define these definitions. Although they have similar sustainability terms, they have different impacts. Net zero includes a mix of energy generation, but its goal is to achieve zero net carbon emissions. A hundred percent renewable means fully decarbonized energy generation. A hundred percent electric means electricity from any source. This is a quick review of electricity units increasing in the magnitude of one thousand. Starts off as watts, kilowatts, megawatts, gigawatts, and terawatts. This is data I previously shared when I presented with Ken Dante this past August. Public Works is completing the Energy Performance Contracting Program with the energy audits of these facilities happening after the new year. One point three seven million is the total amount of utility cost in two thousand and twenty-three for these buildings that were selected for this project. These costs are expected to grow over the next few years if energy costs keep up with inflation at two to three percent. These utility costs take money from the city budget that the community doesn't see. A city-owned renewable generation asset locks in stable, low-cost energy prices for decades. It creates jobs in installation, operation, and maintenance. Investing in city-owned renewable generation can lead to cost savings and potential revenue back to the city if it generates more than it uses. One way to achieve this is to leverage energy performance contracting and a solar tax equity partnership. City-maintained buildings and streetlights need about ten megawatts of electricity. Tyler will speak more on the concept of a solar tax equity partnership toward the end of the presentation. A relevant example of this is that the City of Fountain installed a one point six seven megawatt solar array that offsets a hundred percent of their electricity that powers municipal facilities and streetlights. This achievement marks the first project in the state to fully offset electricity consumption of government facilities with renewable energy. The rest of the project also includes improvements in energy efficiency. Through LED lighting retrofits, water upgrades, and updated building automation systems, Fountain's facilities have undergone significant enhancements. Oh, previous slide, please. I'd like to go back to the previous one. Yes, that one. The state's Energy Performance Contracting Program enabled them to construct the project at no cost to the ratepayers. Because the savings are guaranteed by the performance contractor, the City of Fountain now has a pilot program to evaluate the effectiveness of solar energy generation with no risk to Fountain Utilities' customers. The Department of Local Affairs Renewable and Clean Energy Initiative Grant funded one point three million of the three point six million solar project, which is generated, which is projected to generate approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in annual energy savings. Amazon is already a hundred percent powered by renewable energy. In two thousand and nineteen, they set a goal to match all their electricity consumed across Amazon's global operations, its data centers, corporate buildings, grocery stores, and fulfillment centers with a hundred percent renewable energy by two thousand and thirty. They met that goal seven years ahead of schedule. They have invested billions of dollars in more than five hundred solar and wind projects globally. The story includes the statement that Amazon knew from the start their path would have many obstacles and need to be adjusted for changes in their business and in the world. Nevertheless, the long-term goals remain optimistic and were achieved faster than anticipated. Google's ambitious plan includes gigawatt-scale data centers matched with renewable energy systems. Each project will have wind, solar, and battery storage, with the first phase operational by two thousand and twenty-six and the plan completed by two thousand and twenty-seven, highlighting the speed at which renewable projects can be deployed. Excellent. What are other opportunities? Many community members don't fully understand the long-term economic benefits of renewables. The Energy Advisory Commission would welcome the opportunity to educate stakeholders about the benefits that can include stability of energy costs, potential savings, and even possibly revenue, depending on the amount of renewables deployed, in addition to the incidental benefit of contributing to the state's goal of reducing carbon emissions. What are the benefits of action? What is the opportunity cost of not taking action? Gaining control over energy generation costs. Transitioning to renewable energy turns energy expenses into long-term investments and savings that allow the city to reinvest those savings in community development. It's also about legacy. Positioning Pueblo as a leader in renewable energy improves air quality and creates a lasting impact for future generations. Investing in renewables isn't just about saving money. It's about creating value, building resilience, and securing Pueblo's future. I'll conclude by highlighting the two thousand and twenty-four achievements of Public Works working in conjunction with the Energy Advisory Commission. With our city's grant administrator, there is a lot done this year regarding EV infrastructure because of the large amount of grants available that have set up the groundwork for additional infrastructure. The city procured the Beam off-grid EV chargers, providing solar power charging solutions to the community. Public Works completed the EV readiness plan that lays the groundwork for EV infrastructure expansion. The city secured grants for five Level Two public chargers and four hundred and forty-five thousand for a public DC fast charging plaza. The city submitted a fourteen point three million dollar grant under the Charging and Filling Infrastructure Program to expand EV infrastructure in low-income and multifamily areas. The city submitted the Communities Taking Charge Initiative, seeking two hundred and seven thousand for EV policy in a demonstration project. The city secured a ninety thousand dollar e-bike grant encouraging sustainable transportation alternatives in the community. And the city secured a two hundred and forty thousand dollar staffing grant shared between the city and Pueblo County for sustainability initiatives. The city broke ground on three net zero fire stations and grants funded two hundred and eighty thousand of the geothermal systems. And the net zero design was recommended by the Energy Advisory Commission. The Energy Advisory Commission collaborated with CSU Pueblo students to outline a strategic plan framework for the Energy Commission. And there's plans of the New Day Hydrogen Fueling Facility coming to Pueblo, enhancing the energy portfolio of the region. Public Works launched the Energy Performance Contracting Project to evaluate the city buildings for energy savings and opportunities for renewable energy integration. We began working on the Charging Smart Designation Program with Drive Creek, Colorado, setting Pueblo on track for a certification in EV readiness. And Public Works implemented, began implemented, the Energy Manager software that tracks energy use and billing across city operations. And now Tyler will conclude by explaining the overview of a solar tax equity partnership.
Thanks, George. First of all, thank you for letting me speak tonight and also for being a part of the Energy Commission and trusting us for giving you advice towards your renewable goals into the future. I would say for the two thousand and twenty-four accomplishments that George read, let me compliment him and his consistent behaviors and actions in making sure that those things are going through. Like, but what I see there is we see a lot of use of energy and a lot of switch to a lot of assets that use electricity. But what we don't see is the generation source. We see that going up on the fire stations. The EPC contract no, no doubt will contain some source of renewable energy that will make those buildings more efficient. So what I'm known for in this community, obviously, is being the owner of Steel City Solar. Currently, we have shifted to a hundred percent EV fleet, which has saved our company almost twenty-five thousand dollars a month. This will become a zero-dollar bill for us when solar goes up on our shop later in the next two months due to the fact that now solar will provide for our EV and power costs in, inside of our company. And how we did that, what I'm not known for this company, and what most of you may or may not know that I do, is every year through my background and other companies, we fill a fifteen to twenty million dollar tax mitigation fund. And through that, I get to talk to investors throughout the country who are interested in saving money and taxes. A solar tax equity partner is somebody who takes advantage of the tax benefits of solar. They either contribute a hundred percent or a percentage of that cost to the project in order to take advantage of those tax benefits. Through that, us ourselves at Steel City Solar have right now sold just over three quarters of a million dollars in tax benefits for projects that we've curated. So that means that usually these are for not-for-profits, people that can't take advantage of those tax projects. We have included an investor in that source. So a solar tax equity partner is somebody that gives money in order to take advantage of those tax benefits. And let me suggest to you that we do have access to people who have hundreds of millions of dollars that would be more than willing to either a hundred percent finance or or take a portion of, percentage of the projects that are suggested for generation. This is their goal. That's what they're meant to do. These entities are created so that investors can take advantage of tax benefits that are provided through the tax code.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
And that concludes our presentation. Thank you on behalf of the Energy Advisory Commission.
Questions from Council? Hi, Councilor Gomez.
Yeah, in reference to the generation of the different types of renewables, how do you see that playing out for low-income folks? You're saying these, they're going to be able to apply for certain grants and things that, can you explain that a little bit more, how they're going to be able to afford it? Especially if we get to the point where they're going to need a charging station at their house or in their, in the garage. How does that work?
So there's different state and federal programs, available grants or financing solutions to help people apply for electric vehicle chargers, as well as Black Hills allows for community solar projects. Those can be utilized for low-income areas and different types of
But there's, there's no definitive program out there for low-income folks that you know of, that you can read. Because when we talked about making that switch into renewables, your companies or whatever company is going to generate this is going to have to pass those costs on to somebody, and it's going to be the customer, correct?
Can I help you?
Sure.
Technically not. So you would build a generative source. That generative source would either be financed through grants or, like we said, a tax equity partner. I can tell you right now that your utility is in the business of building regenerative sources. Like, while they shut down coal plants, they are going to build renewable generative sources. Those are going to be passed on to the customer, okay? But we're proposing is the fact that if somebody needs an EV charger, they're going to use that electricity from whatever source that is. That's considered what George said as a, as a term, a hundred percent electric. They may have electric appliances in their house, they have an electric car, but they're getting it from some source, whether that be a coal source. What we're suggesting is a renewable source that could be financed through either grants or the fact that you guys consistently pay about one point five million dollars a month in electricity costs. Once you, there is a payback period, once you invest into renewables. Obviously, there's cash payback period, but there is a time payback period as well. But once you have that payback in your pockets, you're able to put that one point five million dollars into other sources. So you may be able to provide to those low-income individuals or through to your other buildings or, you know, other projects that can generate more electricity. Like George said, when you invest into a generation source, you lock in rates for decades.
So in the, in reference to the renewables, in reference to the generation, for each hydrogen, solar, wind, you have the numbers that we're at right now, what they're providing right now, and not just, I want to know specifically for our, our, maybe Colorado and Pueblo, what are those numbers at right now in reference to the generation power? What are we at now? Now, six percent solar, is it? Ten percent? What is it?
Or from the utility?
Right.
When you, I do not know that number officially.
Okay, so these are ideas you have. Maybe I'm, I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck here, but I'm just saying, when I look at the president that just was elected and he's singing, singing, "Drill, baby, drill", I don't know how, how they're going to handle this for the next four years. I don't think it's in reference to the, to the renewable side of it. I see it the other way. So that is a, that's a problem for me. But unless you can give me some answers, renewable, solar, if you can get those numbers, I would appreciate it very much.
Sure. You can pass those on.
Yes, we'll be able to share that, that information with you through the mayor's office.
Uh, Councilor Flores?
You know, I, I was shocked at our last meeting that we were talking about, you know, doing away with this goal that we have in the city of a hundred percent renewable by two thousand and twenty, thirty-five. I was also shocked that we were talking about doing away with this commission that the city has. And it's almost as though we should have been having this discussion during that prior period so we could understand this more fully. But one of the arguments that was used at our last meeting, and by the way, I was only given a weekend notice that this was even going to be on the agenda. And here's my problem, is that many people believe that the Black Hills rates that we pay for electricity are somehow affected by this notion that by having this goal and the commission, that our rates are higher as a result of this, of this goal that we're trying to reach. And there's a gentleman by the name of, I've got it right here. Joseph Perea, he's the Deputy Director of the Caldera Office of the Utility Consumer Advocate, who flatly say that renewables have nothing to do with the rates charged by Black Hills. Can you confirm that statement?
I don't think we can speak on how Black Hills operates their business as an investor-owned utility, but what we can speak on is the fact that owning a renewable generation asset will lock in prices of energy for decades.
Sure. So I can answer that question, Dennis. Okay. It's cost us nothing, this, this resolution. The, the Black Hills entity that provides the city power, you know, we got another company called San Isabel, too. They, you know, San Isabel is a co-op, so they, they kind of self-govern. Black Hills has to go in front of the P U C. So the renewable energy that they're building is, is because of state legislation calling for an eighty percent reduction in greenhouse gases by two thousand and thirty. But if you look at what should have happened and what they presented early on when they did their clean energy program, that introduced renewables into their system, is it lowered costs? Because now you don't have to deal with the fluctuation of the cost of methane gas because you have that renewables that, that just generates power. And, and the sun is going to come up every day. And, and the excess energy is going to be stored in a battery system that, that's reliable, and those batteries are going to be recycled when they're, when they're out of, out of energy and, and be reused again. And the, the renewable energy technology is going to really democratize our electric grids. It's going to make it cheaper. It's going to, it's, it's going to put energy everywhere. It's going to give us resilience. Now, today, we still need that gas backup. And we're not powered by coal in, in the City of Pueblo. We're powered by, by the gas generation plant, the Pueblo Airport Generation Station that has two, two gas turbines and then a, a gas peaker. Excel has, has the Comanche Plant. That power goes to Denver. It does power, it does power a little bit of the steel mill. But the steel mill is, is, is mostly renewable energy, somewhere around ninety percent. So, you know, renewable energy works. It's cheap. There's this levelized cost of energy that kind of tells you how to compare different, different types of energy. So this, this resolution and ordinance really has, has not incurred any costs. It's a, it's, it's kind of a, a, a post for our future energy, which is going to be renewables. I mean, you can fight it all you want. You can say, "Drill, baby, drill", but it comes down to what, what the economics of, of things are, and renewables are just cheaper. And they're just as reliable, maybe more reliable.
The other question I, and you probably should stay up there, is currently our administration is saying that, and I'm talking about the city's administration, is saying that things are much more expensive as a result of this goal, which in fact, it's my understanding that an EV vehicle basically over its life really saves us about twenty-five percent because it doesn't have as many moving parts as a gas combustible engine. Could you elaborate on that?
I can a little bit. I mean, I could tell you right now, one of the things I mentioned in my presentation was the fact that we're saving twenty-five thousand dollars a month as a company by not buying fuel. So we went and bought thirteen EVs in, inside of our company, created a generation source. And currently, the only things that we pay for in those vehicles are tires and windshield. So it took a ten thousand dollar bill a month on a declining combustible engine. Obviously, the battery has a lifetime, and it will degrade over time, but it really doesn't have the maintenance or, you know, especially you, as a city, have to think who uses your vehicles. They're typically not the ones that pay for them, so they don't treat them the way that they should treat them. And so your repairs, expenses, and other things kind of accelerate. So you tell you from our experience right now, a hundred percent EV fleet would save up or would save you money, but it has saved us almost twenty-five thousand dollars a month in repairs and fuel costs.
One, another light?
I'd like to make it, I'd like to add a comment.
Sure.
So if the city really wants to answer this question, they've got some electric vehicles in their fleets. They could do a study to see how much those things cost to operate versus their internal combustion engines or ICE, ICE, ICE fleet. We can do a comparison. We can, we can make, make our judgments from data, not from dogma. And I think that would be the way to do it. And I'll tell you what, Tyler just told you what's going to be the results because he did it in his fleet. So by converting to an electric fleet, it saved them thousands of dollars. And it's, and this comes from energy efficiency and simplicity of the electric vehicle. Um, uh, there's, there's really no, not a lot of maintenance in, in these cars. They come with the same warranty that a, a internal combustion engine has. Um, it's required by federal law that they, you know, that they need to, to go a hundred thousand miles or eight years is, is the minimum, minimum warranty for, for these things. And I'm a, I'm an electric vehicle owner. It's so much cheaper and so much convenient, because, because you fill up in your, in your, in your garage with a, with a charger. So you don't even have to go to the gas station anymore. Um, you have to be conscious of the charge in the car. But you know, this range, range anxiety comes from people that don't own EVs. Um, uh, once you experience it, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna stay with EVs. I would be, because it's, life is so much simpler.
One of the arguments is that we don't have enough uh charging stations.
Well, and I, George is taking care of, care of a lot of that, by, you know, seeking out these grants. You see, you see how much he's doing. So Pueblo's way ahead of the game. Um, if you go out in the, in the parking lot behind City Hall, there's this beam charger. If you go over to the Vale Hotel, there's another beam charger. Um, these things, you know, operate right off of solar. They're not even connected to the grid. Um, uh, th- they're amazing systems. Uh, they're used by the uh, uh, some of the city fleet. I think the Park and Recreations have, have, have a couple of those beam chargers, right?
Yes, they have one.
Okay, they have one. So, uh, you know, it'd be nice to really make, make our rulings from data, from facts. Then from uh, 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 just a couple of perspectives. And, and, and we can collect that data. Uh, or there are probably organizations willing to do this. Uh, the Clean, Clean Drive Colorado would probably be willing to come in and look at, at, at our uh, gas fleet and, and EV fleet and tell us exactly uh where, where the savings are.
Thank you.
To that EV fleet, just one real quick. I've never been one to be one hundred percent electric or one to be like you don't need the utility. Somebody has to manage the grid. Um, currently, right now, their job is changing. They used to be a source to a customer. And now you have customers who have become sources who now make Black Hills or the utility their customer. And any project that we have given your utility, they have helped us figure out. Like they have helped us facilitate or, you know, even offer deeper ideas of, of how to do. So once presented a project, I believe, you know, they could, they could be on board. But I will say to an EV fleet, it has to be well thought out, has to be planned. Like buying the assets that you're buying right now in the way that you're buying them, like, nah, I call it hodgepodge, sorry. But you know, it's just um fulfilling some sort of requirement or meeting some sort of expectation at the moment. And it's not being planned. So uh, when I made the statement of a hundred percent uh EV fleet, we do have a few gas trucks. These gas trucks are only used when they are needed. Like when you have to go a little bit further or because of charging or other mileage and, and things like that. But as the future comes along, that gets better, you know? Four years ago, there wasn't as many charges as there are now. Right now, you can map a path for a serviceman and you can tell him where to charge, what to charge and how, and how long to charge. And whether it be fifteen minutes and that'll get him to the next three stops, like we're able to do that at the moment. So it does need planned and thought out, but I also think everything in moderation as well. You can't just a hundred percent convert to something that isn't efficient. You're always going to need all of these sources. The point is, is to use all of the sources to contain your budget.
Thank you.
Um, yes, see, it, that was uh, when you said a hundred percent, you know, uh, fleet, you did say that in the beginning
Yep.
of your statement. And we have had a good trial run with the police department and the EV vehicles there. And I mean, as far as the data, there's probably data there as to reason why we did change that. But um, Councilor Martinez, you have some questions?
Yeah, thanks. Um, Mr. Surratt, I'm curious. So when you were talking about the tax benefit or the tax credit, I didn't follow.
So when you produce a renewable project, do the Inflation Reduction Act currently in the Internal Revenue Code, you're able to produce a thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, even up to a sixty percent tax credit. A credit is something much like gift card from the IRS. Okay, it's not a deduction. Also, it produces eighty five percent depreciation. Okay, that tax or your renewable project does. It's a five-year accelerated asset. So any investor that has any sizable taxable income is looking to reduce that income immediately. So they will invest in a project. So if you have a project that costs a hundred thousand dollars, they will give a certain percentage uh to that project, let's say thirty thousand dollars. Let's just match the tax credit that they'll get. Okay, but they'll also get eighty five percent depreciation. Usually their investment works out to be every dollar invested is about three to three and a half dollars to every dollar invested.
Hmm.
So for them, they're reducing their taxable income, but also their out-of-pocket cost towards that tax, because their tax bracket may be in the fifty percent range, uh, because of state tax or something like that. Uh, and they've reduced it to like a twenty five percent out-of-pocket cost.
And then on top of the federal tax credits, do they also get state tax credits?
Uh, currently, right now, um, the only thing offering state tax credits is EVs. I don't believe any solar project offers a state cr- tax credit. Through a conversation I had with the state source on a state project the other day, can't name it right here, right now. But uh, uh, we did bring up the fact of a solar tax equity partner for that state project. And they informed me that the state is now taking the thirty percent tax credit. And I just heard about this Friday and I meant to look into it, but my thought is now the state's going to offer, you know, a tax benefit or some sort of investment. They're gonna sell them themselves. Like they're gonna take their own tax credits and sell them. So to individuals that need them any discount, like on any type of taxes owed, like somebody will pay for that. There is a secondary market for the tax benefits of these types of projects.
And that would be to Councilor Gomez's question around um specifically like lower income neighborhoods and, and folks trying to purchase things like EV or solar panels or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so the example that you showed about um Fountain, the city of Fountain doing solar fields, I'm curious what your opinion would be on replicating that? Or what are your, as like a solar expert, what, what are your thoughts about what Fountain did?
On the one point six megawatts that the city of Fountain produces, like you wanna know how hard that is or?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the feasibility.
Yeah, so we just put uh two point five, two point five megawatts on top of an industrial building in the industrial park. Uh, currently, right now, we are working on a one megawatt project near the airport. So the only thing that really constricts these types of projects is regulation and permitting. It's taken us almost a year to get a permit from Pueblo County due to the ten forty one constraints that they put in place for projects over a megawatt size.
Okay.
So feasibility wise, if you need ten megawatts, like finding uh any type of land that would probably take about fifteen to twenty acres uh to produce something like that. Um, and then at the beginning of the year, we did have some source that was willing to pay for more finance, logistically, uh, that type of project and that cost anywhere from the fifteen to twenty million dollar range is what that would cost.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
President Alif.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that report and thank you for the information that you shared with us. It's very insightful. And obviously, uh, you can look at numbers until you're blue in the face and, and not understand them. So I'm just a, I'm not a mathematician and I'm not a complete uh, uh genius when it comes to renewable energies. But I did make the statement uh last week, and I believe that's what Councilor Flores was reacting to, of saying, Black Hills Energy in two thousand twelve built PAGS, which was the airport generating station. We were promised that with natural gas, our rates were gonna go down. It's gonna put us on the forefront. Didn't work out. Then through state mandates and the renewable energy mandates that come, comes from the state, they had to invest in renewable energies. Never has our prices gone down. Anybody who pays for electricity in the city of Pueblo knows that the investment that Black Hills Energy has had to make into renewables has not lowered our cost. It has not made this, this a, a uh cheaper place to, to uh power our homes and to power our businesses and to power our city. So if you're just sitting here on the outside looking in and saying, where all I hear are these arguments that renewable energies are going to make it cheaper, renewable energies are gonna save us millions and millions of dollars. It just never happens, because what happens is, think of this, if, if Black Hills Energy has a hundred thousand uh, uh ratepayers, fifty thousand that can afford it go on to renewable energy, what happens to the other fifty thousand? What happens to the other fifty thousand is their rates double. There's no advantage to the poor, which uh, uh, Councilor Gomez was talking up too early. Sorry about that.
No, no, I'm agreeing.
Gomez was talking about earlier, because it, it just doesn't work. The math doesn't come out, in my opinion. It's, it's the simple thing. It's like a shell game. They ca- they come to the city and they say, if you put LED lights in all of your streetlights, give us six million dollars and we're gonna save you all that money and the, the, the rates of putting those streetlights in. As soon as we paid six million dollars to do the streetlights, they raised the rates and it was more expensive. Plus, we owed six billion dollars for the, for the lights. It's the same way with renewable energy. You cannot convince me of any other uh, uh, reality than renewables cost us money. Not to mention that renewables are almost fully subsidized by the government. And what is that? Tax dollars from each and every individual that's sitting in here tonight has to subsidize solar, wind, all of these renewable energies. The taxpayers are getting hosed just so uh we can start this new infrastructure. I'm in the car business. There's nobody coming through my door looking for electric vehicles. Nobody, nobody. And as a dealership, to invest in electric vehicles, it's gonna cost our dealership half a million dollars just to put in the infrastructure in our dealership to sell an electric vehicle. That's chargers, the equipment and all the things that it takes to do that. Plus, we don't have anybody coming through the door. Manufacturers of automobiles across the country are backing out of their commitments to making electric vehicles. It's not the, the, this deal that everybody makes it out to be, in my opinion. And again, look on the outside, looking in, it just not, does not seem like it's a good deal. I get it. If every, if it was a perfect world and the government keeps subsidizing all these renewable energies and every single household in America can get solar and, or a windmill or whatever it is, then maybe it's a good deal. I don't know. But it seems to me like we need to just stop all the bologna, build nuclear power and be done with it. It makes sense to me, because now we can power things without going through all this, this stuff. So I, I get what you're saying and I understand the arguments. The arguments I just don't agree with.
I think, uh, let me just bring up one thing in your statement there is consistently you said a group or Black Hills or, you know, a third party organization. So who, who you're depending on, exactly. So what we're suggesting is that you depend on yourselves. You create your own generation source. Somebody told me that I had to invest every time uh solar panels have gone up in cost. My cost to you as a customer has gone up. No doubt, if you were to put five hundred thousand dollars of infrastructure into your dealership, your cost to your customer would go up. So same for Black Hills, like I'm not saying anything about their investment model or what they've done with their rates or anything like that, because they've been super helpful and super clear. Some things you may not know about Black Hills is they did pass on some of those savings. You had to be in the know to be able to do that. They offered a nickel. So currently, right now, they uh have projects out there that everybody who is a part of those projects uh that generate, they not only offset their electrical bill, but Black Hills pays them a nickel per kilowatt hour uh that they generate uh in a renewable program that they have. You just failed to know about those programs or to be a part of those programs. But you had to create a generative source to be able to do that. The city would have created a megawatt, two megawatts of generative source. You could possibly be part of that program. Not saying that they wouldn't do that or they would, but like that was the program. Like we used to do it every quarter, all the projects that we had, we entered them into that quote unquote lottery. I don't think it was really a lottery. It was just the fact that they had the money at the time. But if you created a project during that time, you not only offset your bill dollar for dollar, but essentially like they paid you a dollar five for, for that. So they did pass on those costs. They did uh pass on those savings, but they can only do so much. And quite frankly, like unless you're generating, like they can't pass on any more to you. Like it does become a burden of cost, because they're investing. If you're not investing in it, they are. They are going to build generative sources. They're going to do it through mandates.
They don't invest in anything. The ratepayers invest in everything.
It's your money, right? Understand that. I understand that. And I'm, you know, completely understand that, but it's their choice what to do with the money. And they are investing into uh those regenerative renewable sources. You should do the same. Like you should think about controlling a one point five million dollar cost per month, like that will pay off. Like at some point, like that twenty, twenty-five million dollar investment will pay off. And that will free up one point five million dollars that you can add into infrastructure. You can add into your parks. You can add into your other budgets, like to free up electrical costs. There is a payback. I have all the data in the world that you would want for something like this, that this works.
All right. So you two, you're two common sense and logical, President Alif.
I wanted to make a, a comment if I could.
Well, let's go, because we um are a half an hour over your time. So let's, let's move on.
You know, I think, I, I think uh what um, what we were asking for is to kind of have this discussion at the city level. But uh, but we, we, we never, we never could. Um, if you really want to increase your electric rates, go nuclear, because that'll probably bring, bring your rates double or quadruple. Uh, we studied this. We talked with the, the National Lab in Idaho that's developing small modular reactors. And uh, you know, their comment was, these things aren't gonna be ready until twenty forty. Uh, so they're really far out there. Uh, for, for energy help for the lower income people, it's out there. It's through the county. The city's not doing anything in this. So if you have, uh, and, and the county is starting to put solar on, on, on low income housing. However, before they do that, they make those homes energy efficient, because it, because putting solar on a leaky home is a waste of money. You wanna, you wanna make sure that your home is energy efficient first. So they're doing things like that.
Weatherization program. We currently are their provider for that.
So those opportunities are out there. Uh, uh, people, you know, if they're, if, if they're in that situation, they probably ought to register with the county. So.
Well, I'm, I'm with President Alif. Um, I've been hearing through my time on council, um, energy savings, no dollar amounts. Um, energy uh or high paying jobs, no dollar amounts. Um, I'm looking, what I am looking at is going from coal-fired, which we don't even receive the coal-fired energy, just the mill does here in the, but what I am looking at is uh, tens of millions of dollars loss of revenue coming from that. And nothing, not a, not a replacement source that's gonna bring that revenue back into our community. High paying jobs that are gonna be lost over losing that plant, even though we don't provide that energy here in Pueblo. We're taking the loss. Our um, community members are taking those job losses. I'm looking at uh the eight, one point eight million we put in purchasing EV ma- um vehicles. That's just simple math uh for the police department. And now we're spending a million dollars on gas-powered vehicles, because the police department didn't find those to be productive for what they needed to do in their department. Um, you know, we talk about uh three hundred thousand, I think, was our initial approval for the plans um and the engineering for the fire stations and it goes to net zero. And it goes to net zero. And then our final approval was 1.5 million for those designs and plans for the, uh, fire, for the fire station plans. So we're looking at just the, just some, a few little simple things that, um, that, that didn't pay, pay out for us. And we don't know with a new administration and drill, baby drill, if those grants are even going to be available in the future, do we? Do we know that those grants? I mean, are, are, do you really think that these grants are going to be available? Because you know, what I noticed was is.
You know why I think they're going to be available?
Well.
Cause I, I sincerely believe that there are still people out there that need tax benefits. They're, I, I live in this world. I live in the tax benefit world. Like tax benefits drive everything, like tax savings drives everything, whether that be through a subsidy or through some sort of other project. Like it drives everything. So even though you may say, they say drill, baby drill, but you know, tax, taxes always play in and taxes always play out. Like the renewable, the, um, Inflation Reduction Act is in place for the next 10 years. Thirty percent tax credit on, on those projects in the next 10 years. You could take advantage of that. When you say payout, uh, uh, sorry, I have a, uh, degree in accounting and, and a degree in financial, uh, reporting and auditing. Present value of cash flows plays out. When you invest today, like you are multiplying those dollars for tomorrow. Like take into account, I had a customer complain of their interest rate that they took on a solar loan. Ultimately, they would pay fifty-five thousand dollars for, uh, their system after interest in the 20-year note that they took. Okay. Did the math like, uh, and what they invested, if they paid the same dollar amount and took Black Hills rate increases, like eighteen percent currently, uh, in 2024, just one raise, like he would pay sixty-five thousand dollars in energy costs over that timeframe. Not to say the Black Hills can't lower their rates or raise them during that timeframe. But again, to you, Mr. Ayla, like you're subject to a third party. What he's not subject to now is a third party. He controls his cost. Like I said, a utility used to be a producer to a customer. Now they're a grid manager. To your statement on jobs, how many people do you think I employ in the solar field? Currently in the eight years that we've been in business, we created.
Studies that we've seen is.
We created thirty jobs, right? There's, we've also installed over thirty-five hundred systems in our local area. That's just our company alone. Like keep in mind all of the other ones. Like granted, you've been dealing with the Wild West for the last five to six years in the solar and renewable energy industry. Like it has gone from a very sales heavy to now a very regulated, uh, and, uh, regimented, uh, type industry. It is regulating itself. It is new. So we created thirty jobs.
It's your business.
Thirty-five hundred systems, right?
A privatized sector, isn't it?
I believe there's about eight thousand generative systems in the area. And to us, that will create.
Sector.
To us, that will create service over the next 25 years of service individuals, much like HVAC techs or plumbing or anything like that. These people are certified. We've also created ten actual electricians through our education program at our company. Like done right, like the high paying jobs and the education and all the things that you may lose in coal, like do come back because these systems need managed, they need service, they need, uh, everything under the sun. Like there's warranties, like manufacturer and also workmanship type warranties. All of these things need done. So as you lose jobs, you gain jobs. Like, and I'm not saying that you'll lose every job. Like I said before, I'm a person of moderation. I'm not saying that you close everything down of coal or gas or anything like that and convert all the way to wind and other things. But you know, do believe like your investment in the fire stations, it's present value that you've made. So that in 10 years, or it's a five year payback actually. And if you'd sell that tax credit, I have an investor for you tomorrow to be able to buy that, to break your costs. Like you're not thinking outside of the box. You're thinking in the box of what this costs today and not adding things that are possible as part of these things. But your investment just alone in that today as a city in those fire stations will pay off in the future. You won't have energy costs. You won't have a, an additional for building additional buildings. You won't have a, a extra like energy cost to that building.
All right.
That building will be net zero.
Question.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, from what I'm hearing and what I'm reading, you know, the chances of getting these kinds of programs done for a city, they're talking 2040, 2050. And we're saying 2030 for the fleets. But you know, there are an awful lot of scams going out there with solar programs. It's a big problem. It's all over the place. And I think until they get that straightened out, right now you're over promising, in my, my opinion. And I understand that's your industry. That's great. But there is no way, I mean, when you have so many different things, worst, the, the one thing you said to, was the combination of maybe renewables helping generate. I got that. I kind of like that idea. But when you're talking about nuclear, hydro power, uh, uh, everything from solar, wind, even algae, methane, all these things that you can produce energy from. I think you're a long way off. I think the, the idea that we're going to get this somehow done for 2030, I don't think you're going to make it.
You could be a hundred percent generative by the end of 2025.
All right. Thank you.
I, I, I want to, you, you, you brought up, you brought up, you brought up a, a point that I, that needs to.
But you're over on your time.
Thank you.
And we have a few guests.
Appreciate it.
And so we're going to move on to our next, um, Petco update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, uh, I'll hand these out. I apologize. I didn't, wasn't able to get any kind of a PowerPoint done beforehand. I gotta get one. In the interest of time, we're not going to go through it, but I wanted you to have some of the information to take home and if, and certainly because it's. Um, this is what we consider what we call our semi-annual update to the city where the requirement or um, prospects in a very generic form. Essentially how many we've been dealing with in 2024, how many you think are realistic, how many are possible? Kind of the themes of the day. I'm going to start the conversation a little bit just to kind of make sure we under, you know, to reinforce or to, uh, so everybody understands what we do and why we do it. Cause I think it's always important during conversations at the end of the year to talk about um, our business versus, um, some of the other economic development, um, efforts that go on in the community. We always, um, periodically we, um, have our numbers validated by outside economics, uh, through Summit Economics out of Caro Springs. So every four or five years we updated, we haven't updated it for a year or two. But just to give you an idea, we're in the primary job business. Again, you know this, but for anybody listening, primary jobs are those, those businesses that provide a product or service and 51% is exported out of the community. That brings new revenue in the community, brings new dollars into the community. Been doing Petco since nineteen eighty-one. Obviously has brought in a number of companies. Certainly there's been through the years, there's been a few that have left, a few that have been lost. But nevertheless, um, the, the data, at least that's been validated by Summit Economics. The last study will indicate that, um, Petco has brought in an average of seventy-one hundred jobs, which represents about 12% of the total non-farm wage and salary jobs. Um, since the pandemic, the impact increased to twelve thousand two hundred total jobs, which is about eighteen point four percent of the Pueblo FSA. The reason we do primary jobs is what we call the, this, the multiplier effect. So somebody like a, uh, since we're talking about energy today, somebody like a CS Wind or, um, a Train Corporation or Collins Aerospace, they're employing a number of people. Those employees as well as those businesses spend dollars, then they create additional opportunities in the communities. We call those indirect or induced jobs. So from the Summit Economic, these are our numbers, not, not our numbers. This is from the Summit Economic Study. Last time we did it, um, in, from twenty twenty-two numbers, those seven thousand, just over seven thousand jobs in thirty-three distinct industries create or multiply to create an additional four thousand six hundred and twenty jobs. That's a multiplier effect of point six one, which is actually a conservative multiplier effect. Those then, um, combined with the direct jobs will show about twelve thousand total annual jobs employed by the city based on, and I don't say Petco's efforts because it's the city and the county, it's the community's efforts to bring in primary jobs. It's not just us. We're part of the, um, part of the, um, the tools of the tool belt necessarily, but it's through a partnership with everybody. To give you an idea of what the, those indirect and induced industries would be, um, service, household, um, housing, retail, medical, food, finance, autos, um, of the, of the seventy percent of the total indirect dollars, uh, about twenty-nine percent go to the household owner, occupied housing, retail, medical. About thirteen percent goes to wholesale, which grocery, durable goods, equipment, ten percent transportation, business services, utilities. And then down the line, obviously from, uh, banking, finance, restaurants, retail restaurants, as well as, um, cultural and recreation, um, amenities. So, uh, example, the Summit Economic Study, um, estimated that, um, the cultural and recreational amenities such as the zoo, Riverwalk, museums, entertainment, outdoor activities, realize about eight to 10% increase in attendance due to Petco assisted jobs. Not annually jobs we're bringing in, but over the time period. City sales tax collects, um, approximately five point seven million, um, from those jobs annually. About seven percent of the total collection. So it gives you an idea of what we do and why we do it, as well as the city of Pueblo receives about approximately 1.7 million in property taxes, for taxes on the primary employer residences and employer properties, uh, which represents about total percent, 10% of the, of, of what comes in. So that gives you an idea of, um, kind of what we do and how we, how we do it. The, the clusters, every three or four to five years, we update and we look at our clusters and what we do and what we try to chase. In 2025, you'll see, when you, when you go through it, um, you'll see expanded clusters. You'll see an updating in 2025. It's about, last time we did this, we estimated, we did it, um, during the COVID years. To get a feel as we came out of COVID, what are the industries we should be chasing? Should we redefine what we're doing? The clusters that we spent a lot of time marketing and we'll get into the marketing efforts and what we do is, is primarily in aerospace and defense. We say anything rail related. So it's going to be rail manufacturing, rail products, rail distribution, transportation, raw materials. Anything rail related, obviously that's a theme of Pueblo. That's where we came from. We understand that. Our biggest employer, uh, manufacturer employer to date is still the, the steel mill, which is the largest economic driver in the community and one of the largest in the States. Outdoor recreation industry is one we spent a lot of time in, that's manufacturing those product and services related, uh, to the outdoor recreation industry. Food and beverage processing, chemical manufacturing, construction related manufacturing. An aspirational one we talk about which professional and scientific services and a little bit lesser degree, the hemp industries. We have spent the last couple of years, um, especially in 2024, doubling our marketing efforts externally. A lot of what we do is marketing outside of Pueblo. So, uh, there's sometimes a wonder what we do, why we do things. But, um, we spend a tremendous amount of resources. The city provides us dollars for marketing purposes that go towards the hard costs of marketing, um, which, um, this, this past year and Joe can certainly comment on it. He spends a lot of time doing this, um, full time, which is a lot of TV internet marketing. Our marketing efforts have been primarily, um, at least as far as the, the outreach marketing, the Denver, Chicago, Phoenix, Southern California markets. What we try to do is identify inside, if you're familiar with what they call the NEX code, which is industry codes. We dive into them. We try to say, okay, these are growth clusters. These are opportunities for the community. These fit the profile of Pueblo as far as workforce, utilities, land, um, infrastructure that's necessary. And so we spent a lot of efforts advertising in those markets. And this year was a, almost a doubling down effort in the site selector world. So primarily a lot of the large companies, large industries are represented by site selectors. These are professional groups, um, the likes of either, uh, big commercial brokerage firms like a CBRE, Deloitte, or, um, specialized firms that market big companies when they're looking for site locations. This year we did site selector visits to Chicago. Joe did site, Joe did these site selector visits to Chicago, Dallas, um, Atlanta and South Carolina. And then next year we'll start up our site selectors again. In addition to the direct marketing to, uh, those communities and site selectors, um, there was significant industry trade show attendance, um, through the EDCC, which is the State Economic Development Organization. The International Economic Development Council, which had their annual conference in, in Denver this year, which we, uh, sponsored and spent like three days, two or three days up there, as well as the Site Selector Guild. Site Selector Guild is kind of the exclusive group of site selectors. It's kind of self-identified, but it's where most of the activities for the large companies come from, as well as interacting with our local company supply chain possibilities, expanding, uh, expansion opportunities. Our, our mission in life is the attraction, which is bringing them in, retaining them, which is keeping them here and expanding them. The most, the one that we get, obviously what, what we get recognition for or criticized for would be attraction. Those companies that are moving into, um, unfortunately or fortunately, that's what we get judged by. I'll submit to you, the most important work that happens is keeping them here. It's a lot easier to keep a company here and more important to keep a company here than to bring a company in. So we focus a lot on keeping companies here. What we also do when we're talking to companies, we spend a lot of time, there's a lot of themes and I'll kind of go through the themes in economic development of what, what companies are looking for. Workforce has been a theme for a while, sometimes, so we're careful on workforce. We've got to make sure we have the workforce. We have the ability to get to the workforce we need. But we also want to be mindful of other manufacturers and who are here. We don't want to bring a company in, it's going to hurt one of our existing manufacturers. So we're careful on that. As well as we don't want to over promise opportunities because if you bring a company in, you don't have the workforce, you're going to get that black mark inside the world and they're going to say you over promised. So what we try to do is under promise, so an older liver. A lot of people say that, but through our partnerships with Pueblo Community College, College State Pueblo, workforce and every other group that's working on talent and acquisition, um, is an important, uh, part of what we do. Our breakdown for January twenty twenty-four to at least today's date, um, we have not had, um, any announcements yet this year. Approximately two hundred and twenty-five, um, inquiries come in. An inquiry is essentially phone calls lead something that leads us to, uh, a company or somebody looking to do something in the community. Those whittle down, not all those are good prospects. Some of them are primary jobs, some of them are primary jobs, some of them just don't make sense. Some we don't have the workforce. A lot of these don't have funding attached to them. They wouldn't pass our due diligence process, which we then go into what we consider good prospects. That starts spending a little bit more and extra time on it, probably forty-five to fifty good prospects through the year. Businesses with interest or a high level of interest, somewhere around thirty-five plus. Businesses likely to move is about fifteen, fifteen plus. Potential jobs is always tough to estimate, but we estimate somewhere around twenty-five hundred jobs, which and I'll submit to you, we do want to have the workforce at this point for twenty-five hundred jobs. I wish we did. But nevertheless, um, that's what the potential jobs with the businesses likely to move. Average wage would be somewhere around seventy-two thousand, uh, plus benefits on top. Benefit packages that we look for to make sure a company is going to provide benefits. We try to make sure that they have at least a twenty to twenty-five percent benefit package on top of their annual wages. We report, um, um, non, uh, just wage an hour as well as, um, the unweighted jobs because the Hessen Sales Tax requires us to report on, um, wage income without benefits on top of it to some degree. Our pipeline follows our clusters for the most part. We do have companies currently in the pipeline, um, in construction and related industry, biomedical, rail related, food and beverage, heavy fabrication, outdoor recreation, aerospace and defense. And I'm going to mention renewable energies. Obviously you just had a big conversation on energy, renewable energy. Every year, um, I shouldn't say every year. There was a theme that was kind of pushed early in the year that was very, very active without identifying prospects, are really kind of industry specific. But a large, a large, a large volume of significant manufacturing in, involved in the renewable energy space, or projects we're working on. Some of these, um, um, obviously we're large, large in scope. We usually see a slowdown during a presidential year election. And you'll start seeing a little bit of a slowdown, August, September. People are going to wonder what's going on. This was a very interesting election where you almost saw everything ground to a halt because you had almost a change in dynamics potentially happening. So it was interesting to see what's going to happen. But we had an extreme slowdown since late September where companies are saying, we're. So it was interesting to see what's going to happen, but we had an extreme slowdown since late September where companies are saying, we're going to pause, we're going to wait to see what happens after the election, not only, um, the president election, but certainly Congress and is what we found out, obviously from a global perspective, as we learned that, you know, half the world's population was going through elections in two thousand and twenty four, so it was a global, uh, changeover that was happening. To give you an idea what's happening in site selection right now, and it lead in a little bit, and I'm not, it, it, the Site Selector Guild, which we work with closely on a regular basis, publishes a survey for all their site selectors and they say, what's the theme, what are they seeing in two thousand and twenty four, what are they going to see in two thousand and twenty five? The way site selection works for site selectors is their company will, um, you know, an Acme widget company will say, they'll go to site selector and I said, I need this kind of location. They're going to try to identify the location and they're going to whittle that down, um, based on a number of factors. The theme in site selection for two thousand and twenty four, um, what they call a lot of global mega trends were happening. Trade fictions and global supply chain challenges, supply chain was an issue coming out of COVID, it continued to be an issue, not as bad as it used to be. Obviously inflation was a significant issue for people as well as the, what I call the spike in the interest rate, which, which made the dollars extremely expensive for, um, including up until today. Changes in the size, growth and structure of populations in the work, climate change, increasing amount of extreme weather events, global infrastructure vulnerabilities, particularly the electric power, evolving pub, public sentiments and shifting levels of support, inflationary, um, inflationary concerns, the number one factor the companies are looking for right now, in two thousand and twenty four, they have been for some time, certainly workforce is important, but right now companies are looking for infrastructure, they're looking for those locations that have the utilities and the infrastructure in place. I overheard a little bit of the conversation before, it's obviously there's been this big, big push to electrification, which means, um, projects that we've been seeing have huge electric concerns and needs, um, um, almost utility scale type, uh, electric needs attached to it. Of those site selectors, they're telling us about eighty percent believe that utility and the infrastructure is going to drive all decisions going forward. Then you whittle it down to the workforce and labor availability, um, the availability and development of ready made sites, supply chain risk, geopolitical risk, operating costs, political elections, um, and all the way down, kind of as we go down further. Couple quotes that were very interesting from some of the site selectors that I thought it'd be interesting to share with you, just to give you a feel for what they're seeing. And this is not only site selectors in the country, but globally. We'll tell you that the biggest challenge facing the industrial market is lack of a development ready sites with desired available utility capacity. When utilities require upgrades to meet capacity needs, you're looking at a twenty four to thirty six month timeline for that to occur, which rarely meet a company plant startup, everything is moving faster, and if your community that truly wants to attract new jobs and investments to your community, you must get your sites and infrastructure prepared ahead of such inquiries. Right now, the theme on the industrial sites, what's nice about, obviously the, there's a lot of benefits of what the community has done by, um, taxing themselves the Hessen sales tax. It allows us to incentivize companies, it allows us to play, um, in the very competitive game as far as the incentive game, but it also allows us to build and help with the infrastructure necessary for the primary job sites. The large industrial projects face a significant challenge meeting their energy, energy demands. So give you a scope of the projects that we're seeing for energy demands right now. We recognize without a doubt that the cost of electricity is not just troublesome, it's, it's severely impacting us, um, in our ability to locate companies. This isn't a, um, I don't, we don't say that lightly, um, we appreciate the city and the county and, um, you know, we join their support intervening in the Black Hills rate increase because it's hampered our ability to bring in projects, but not only that, in conjunction with that, it's the ability to bring in the large loads as well. So what we're seeing, there's, if you, almost any day you can open up the paper and see some kind of a, um, something going on in the, in, in the nation that, um, is projects needing for data centers, AI, something to that nature of, you know, three to five hundred megawatts. Right now, our utility capacity in our Southern Park, which is the St. Charles Industrial Park, is somewhere between fifty and a hundred megawatts. We can probably get up to fifty, it's going to take a lot of work to get to the hundred side, can't get to the three hundred to five hundred without significant investment, and there's a timeline into it. The airport industrial park has similar capacity issues, previously up until a year, two year ago, those weren't, but those weren't necessarily a problem because we weren't seeing those type of demands coming through. Um, you know, a twenty, thirty megawatt project was a big, big project, other than the steel mill, obviously the steel mill was a, it's almost a unicorn project because it was just so vast and so big as far as what the utility skills were needing. And so right now, there's a lot of activity nationwide to try to figure out who's going to be able to provide that kind of electric load, as well as what the speed to be able to get that electric load to, um, to be able to track these data centers and these AI type companies or these hyperscale data centers. We, uh, Joe's been in some of the meetings, obviously, where we asked some of the data center people, said, it's almost as if you guys woke up in the middle of the night and realized the whole country is out of power, and they said, that's pretty much right, um, that there is such a push for large projects, um, and large utility scale projects for these utility scale kind of data centers, AI, not to, not necessarily to identify them specifically, um, that, uh, what the site selectors have chimed in on this project, on these type of projects as well, they said, you know, the government utilities need to add and replace the equivalent of virtually all of the world power grids by two thousand and forty to shore up the availability of power that's generating the need for the electric, uh, these electric operations. So this push to electrification, um, the electric power capacity is going to affect our community. So when I, I know we came in to give a Petco update necessarily on what we've been working on, where we're going, but this is going to go into two thousand and twenty five. So we have to be able to, we have to understand the effect that the rates have caused on us in the last ten years. We also have to understand the effect that we're going to have if we cannot be able, if we can't find a way to obtain these large, large lows to attract, um, these large projects that are, that are opportunities, that we have opportunities to grab in this community, and those are, you know, the scale of those from an economic impact, would rival of the scale from, uh, they're not big job numbers, if you know anything, you're familiar with those type of data centers and how that works, they're not big, big job numbers, but they're in tremendous economic impacts to the community, these are talking two, three billion dollar build out projects. So you can imagine what the, what the sales and use tax as well as the property tax that's imposed on those. So, um, we plan on updating, um, our, our cluster teams to some degree next year, we'll probably tweak them a little bit to look and see how they, how this electrification has changed them. But we're also planning on doing a lot of work for the, with the, uh, with the Southern Park, St. Charles Industrial Park, which has added about four hundred acres to it, that sets up perfectly for these large projects as well as the airport industrial park. With that, I know I probably went on too long, I want to leave plenty of time for questions.
Questions from council. And Councilor Gomez.
Yeah, is there any idea in reference to, um, the data centers, I keep on hearing about this, I haven't had a chance to look up a lot of it, but is there any estimates on what kind of wattage we would need or how many data centers we're talking about, are they average, are they different for different industries? Do we have any of those numbers at all?
Yeah, I mean, it used to be your data centers, we, we, about two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, we started looking at the data centers and realized that we just weren't going to be competitive because our pricing wasn't going to be good. Back then, there were forty to fifty thousand, maybe a hundred thousand square foot facilities, now there are two hundred and fifty thousand square foot facilities, that need a minimum of fifty to a hundred megawatts to get going, and but then within two to three years, they need somewhere between three to five hundred megawatts. We're seeing some of the hyperscale data center projects, um, that are being, um, cited or that are in site selection processes around the country that are upwards of a gigabyte, uh, excuse me, a gig of, of, of electricity. But this and, and, and my, my friends behind me may have a better idea, but I think Black Hills, my understanding, I think they provide what, three hundred and fifty, four hundred megawatts to the city of Pueblo for power of the entire city?
Four forty.
Thanks, yeah, so I knew Cam would have it. So about four hundred megawatts, Black Hills provides the city, so you've got to figure one data center or one hyper cell data centers, the equivalent, if not larger than the entire electric supply that they're supplying to the city of Pueblo.
Is there any, again, just trying to learn, yeah, are there any, in reference, let's say, you said four hundred and forty megawatts, correct? Does that relate to somehow in the number of employees that would have to run that data center, or is that individually?
It's about.
Off world industry wants to use the wattage, how does that?
No, it's usually by square footage, so they do it by square footage to some degree, what we're seeing is about, for every two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building space, it's about forty to fifty employees.
And.
High value employees, but, yeah, well paid employees, these aren't, you know, you're looking at, I think the last numbers were sitting somewhere around eighty, eighty five thousand, starting, um, and upwards. They're not big employment numbers, but they're high value jobs.
The cap X is very large.
Say that again?
The cap X is very large, the capital.
Uh, one more quick question, um, in reference to jobs that we have here that are struggling, and I don't know how this works with Petco because I'm not, I really haven't zoomed in on Petco, but in reference to those, if they're leaving or they're planning on leaving, and, and is any way that you can inject any kind of help to them to prevent them from leaving? It means those jobs are staying, but I don't know how you would figure that out, I'm sure you'd have to do some kind of.
No, it's a, yeah, it's a great question, it kind of goes in the retention world. Typically, um, when a company is either going to be closing or is going to be leaving for some reason and we get an advance notice, but we'll reach out to them and find out what the issue is, is, but it's a supply chain issue, is it a workforce issue, or was there something that we can help control? And we can help them work through it, which happens, um, periodically, I don't want to say how often necessarily, but we're constantly in communication with them. We have a group, um, that goes out and interviews most of the manufacturers to find out what kind of issues that they're running into. What we're careful with though is that, um, typically if there's market pressures, their reason why they're going to be leaving, an injection of taxpayer dollars probably wouldn't help it, and we want to be careful with that too, because we don't want to, the, 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 somewhat of an unwritten rule, um, in economic development is you want to be careful how you incentivize retention jobs, because you don't want companies, and I'm not saying anybody in the community would do this, because we've got a great relationship, we've got great manufacturers and primary job employers, but you don't want them to come to you and say, we're going to leave, somebody else has given us a million bucks, you give us a million bucks, or we're going to leave. Maybe not the type of company we want to try to keep necessarily, we try, want to bring somebody in. Usually when companies either leave, um, or, uh, they, for some reason don't make it, um, it's typically market pressures or, um, some kind of a, a economic change. What we try to make sure is when we recommend companies, uh, companies to incentivize is that, um, we obviously do a financial due diligence, so it's, it's not necessarily that they fail because of under capitalization or, um, couldn't make it a go with some kind of an external factor or something like a change in, really change in the geopolitical app, economics of the, essentially what you're seeing, where it's potentially going to happen in this, coming out of this year's election, you're going to see a change in what's happening. What's nice about, you know, my, the slides indicated, I think there's somewhere around thirty three distinct industries that we've incentivized, so if one industry gets beat up to some degree, example being the steel industry. So, you know, if, if, if one atmosphere, the mill, um, say the oil and gas, and it's the, a portion of that mill, usually we're balanced out that we don't get hit. So we don't have, you know, when the steel industry crashed in the late seventies, our unemployment went to twenty five percent or whatever it was, we can't afford that kind of situation. So we know that there's going to be companies, there's going to be ebb and flow with different industries, but we're balanced enough that it's not going to affect us with a big layoff or a small, even a smaller layoff. Typically, most of the employers are trying to hire still right now, I know that we're doing a lot of retention, retention interviews with companies, and most of them are telling us right now that we're still trying to hire, so if we get word that somebody's laying off or are going to be leaving town, we'll see if we can get to their employees, let them know to contact us, we'll get them in contact with the, um, with the, there's a, there's, called the HR group, it's all the HR managers, the manufacturers that have a, meet on a regular basis to get their names and the resumes to the HR groups that the other manufacturers can get an opportunity to employ them.
Are there any impediments to, I guess, even like a small business, I had a small business and some of the things I had to jump through in the hoops that I had to do to get my business going, it was red tape nightmare, um, do you face the same kind of things in reference to say like, getting a building ready to be occupied and all those regulations that come down like rain, how do, how do you guys handle that?
Yeah, I mean, so we have, it depends, I mean, so we have, we have our projects, um, I shouldn't say our, I mean, they're, they're obviously city projects that's, they're working with us or Pueblo Development Foundation where they're standing up a building, um, or finishing out a building, um, depending on where it's located. If it's in the Minnaqua Industrial Park or this, um, or, um, a project that would go in the St. Charles Industrial Park, which would probably be annexed in the city, we'd be dealing with the city, so be working with city staff, what we try to do is, or if it's the airport industrial park, it's kind of a combination because a lot of that land is in the county, but then we have city water, city sewer and the fire department that handles it. So we try to do on those projects is get everybody together early on and say, this is the project, this is what we're going to do, um, you know, try to weigh in, we're going to try to keep everybody communicating as we go, that's not going to say there's not going to be hiccups, there's probably will be, but we try to communicate the best we possibly can and make sure we're communicating with the city and the county, and hopefully they're doing the same thing. And, and we're all working towards a, you know, the common mission of which is opening up facility for manufacturers. But that's not to say there's not hiccups along the way, there certainly are, there's difference of opinion, there might be some things that we think, hey, we just don't agree with, but we've got to work through it.
Thank you.
Um, just have a less, um, generalized and a more specific, um, accounting of how you work with companies that are pulling out. Like most recently, um, you know, Russ wholesale that owes us, they're in a deficit of one point three million dollars. What was your approach with them to, you know, to try to prevent them from actually closing down like they're doing and leaving town?
Sure, yeah, no, so Russ Davis reached out to us before they sent, before they, what, either right before, either they're sending it out and they let us know that, um, they were closing, um, shutting down this facility. The reason, um, that they provided us is that it was a contractual reason that they lost contracts to the providers, I mean, that were they're providing to, and so it didn't make sense to keep this facility open. In that case, um, what we told them was, um, what they, how they needed to stay in compliance with the city on their obligation with the, with the Hessen sales tax agreement, the employment agreement, which means they have to make sure they're employing those employees or paying any penalties, it's my understanding they're current. We told them they need to continue to stay current, so if they shut down, they got to pay that money back to the city. As well as ask them to provide any workforce that's looking for additional jobs to reach out to us, and then we'll put them in contact with the HR group or other employers, and so that's happened. Another manufacturer's reached out to us on, on another issue, we let them know that there is a workforce of some sixty to a hundred people that were looking for opportunities, we're going to put them in contact with them. It depends, it's a great question, it's, it could be specific, it could be a company that, um, had been having hiring issues or workforce issues, and so we try to get, figure out what their issue is, sometimes we've had them talk to other manufacturers or HR, um, groups, um, it could be a culture issue and try to fix that, and it's righted the ship to some degree, but it's a great question.
Their contracts is, I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty, um, I mean, that's everything, right? How, what was their, um, background when we took them on as, you know, invest, as an investment, investing in them? I mean, did they have a history of, had been in business for years, what was their, were they new to their, their industry?
No, that's a great question, so, no, they were, they were an existing manufacturer or, or a packaging facility coming out of the upper Midwest, so they have significant operations, I believe, up in Wisconsin and Minnesota, um, they were opening this facility, um, because a lot of the food and beverage have gone or pushing to a regional, uh, model, um, if you look at, you know, if you look at somewhere like Pueblo, um, they want to be, those food and beverage manufacturers want to be a certain geography away from either a large population center or a distribution warehouse, wherever they're distributing, whether they're distributing through Costco to Walmart or whoever it's going to be, um, sometimes those large, um, distribution or who they're selling it to will change their geography requirements, you've got to be a certain distance away from them, you know, that we've ran into a couple of companies where we tried to bring into the community, we're outside of a distribution network, if you will. I don't want to specifically identify who the, who they were providing to, I think that's up to Russ Davis to do it, but I can tell you that the customer who they was providing it from changed their distance requirement, and so they fell outside that territory. But no, they still have significant operations in the Midwest.
They still do, so there's a possibility that is any of the money owed to us tied back to those other facilities as, as collateral?
No, no, the city has full collateral against that facility on a first deed of trust against the building, and so the city, if they don't pay it back, the city could execute on that first deed of trust and foreclose on the building, or if it gets sold and the city gets made, paid in full. But what we told Russ Davis and anybody that closes is that they've got an obligation to the city and we expect them to honor it, we expect them to pay it. We're not looking for forgiveness, our job is we want them to have the jobs, but what we always try to make sure is the taxpayers are.
So the building is the only collateral?
Totally, yeah.
Kind of like the Pope Building.
I'm sorry?
I said, kind of like the Pope Building, like how we got back the Pope Building.
Uh, yeah, kind of, yeah, it's a different.
Indy dwell. Where are we at with Indy dwell, because we haven't heard, heard any updates on Indy dwell, and they've got to be, are they in compliance with?
Indy dwell's not.
So where's the update and why have, because it's, I mean, they've been shut down for about a year and we have had no updates on anything when it comes to Indy dwell. and we have had no updates on anything when it comes to Indy dwell. What's going on there?
Uh, Indy dwell is completely closed. That deal was set up in a way that the half cent sales tax was not going to be, uh, it won't be an issue if that company left. It was set up as what we call a rent reimbursement agreement. And that's a, you know, there's two ways, there's a number of ways to do it, employment agreement. One of them is you front load it, you provide certain capital to it, and then you either get a, have the, the company provide some kind of security. Typically, a first lien against the building could be equipment or it could be a bank letter of credit. There's another model that we've been doing, which is a, a rent reimbursement, which is earn as you go. So, um, if you have fifty employees, you get a certain amount of your rent reimbursed by the city based on a pro act, prorated number of those employees. And so the city and that shit, and those rent reimbursement, they would not owe anything if they left. Unfortunately, um, on the Indy dwell, um, there was an, as I understand it, there was an, uh, an overpayment on employees that didn't, that weren't there necessarily. That Indy dwell had sent a reimbursement to the city for, um, the total amount of employees that would have been there, not the ones that they actually were employing, and the city paid that. I'm not fault, I'm not criticizing any either side of it, but the reality is that money got paid out that shouldn't have been paid out. And so, um, which was outside of the way the deal was structured. So no, Indy dwell is completely closed, the facility is available downtown.
Paid by about how much?
I think the initial amount, they were paid about four to five hundred thousand dollars. I think with interest, it's probably up to seven fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars with the interest factor attached to it.
So that's another half, quarter of a million loss. Anybody else in default? At this time?
Um, I'd have to look at the, the list. I think, um, Vosla is still considered in default at this point. I'd have to look at the city list, but those are the only two that I think at this point.
Okay, and how much are they in default?
I'd have to look it up. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that information.
So about two million with the other two in default between, uh, Russ wholesale and Indy dwell.
Russ, the Russ Davis or Crazy Fresh, Russ Davis is not in default.
Well.
They're in compliance or they're.
Just don't know if they're going to pay it or not.
Oh, they have been paying it.
Well, they have, but to the end of the year, but, but they don't have any business after they move away. And the only collateral would be the building.
Correct.
Yeah. And if we sell it, then we can probably.
Well, they'd have to sell it. Yeah, they'd sell it. The city would be reimbursed in full, um, with an interest component on Russ Davis without a doubt, because they have the, the security against the property.
Have you gotten a full certificate of occupancy yet on the, um, Bomecore building?
Yes.
It's, it's full?
Yes.
It's one hundred percent?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, Counselor Martinez?
Thanks, Jeff and Joe. Um, okay, for the Economic Development Strategic Plan slide. So for the expanded clusters updating twenty twenty-five, does that mean that you're including more sectors as part of the outreach? Or these are the sectors that you're going to be including in twenty twenty-five?
No, that means we, we anticipate, we'll look at other cluster opportunities. We'll look and see what, you know, what growth industries are out there, what we think makes sense for us to chase. So no, we're open to other clusters without a doubt. We do anticipate, um, some of these certainly surviving because they're active. You know, I don't think aerospace and defense really comes off the cluster list, because it's really the kind of the big ticket item to some degree. Rail related is going to be big for us, because there's so many companies in the community that manufacture product for rail or provide distribution opportunities, because we have rail industries and rail networks in place. I would anticipate, you know, outdoor recreation industry is a good example. When we stood up the outdoor recreation industry, we tried to figure out inside that outdoor recreation industry, where should, where can we fit? So we looked at it from the manufacturing side. We learned that obviously the apparel side is going to be difficult, because most of that's still overseas. You know, some of the small batch manufacturing, if whether it was plastic extruding or metal works associated with it. So what we'll do is dive into those clusters, but if there's other clusters or other opportunities that we think we should be chasing over and above those, we're certainly open to it.
And help me understand the history behind, because I think it's, it's specifically in the charter or in the originally approved ballot measure around the half cent sales tax. Why does it, why does it have a prohibition on only one thing per sector? Like, you're only going to incentivize one company per sector. Like, if you do a, if you incentivize a, um, like a data center, you can only incentivize one. Is that true?
No.
I don't know where I heard that.
No, it's not. But what we, what we're careful of is there is a competition side attached to it. So inside the House and Sales Tax Ordinance, um, we can incentivize a company that's going to quote, substantially compete with another company that's currently operating in Pablo. So that might be kind of where that comes from. And so give you an example, um, you know, we're not, if we look at it kind of on a global, if you have, if you have a company that has a, there, there's not a lot of the pieces of pie to go around to some degree. Let's just say when they stood up the wind industry, um, when we brought Vestas to town in nine, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Wind industry was pretty new, there was two manufacturers essentially, large manufacturers. It was what Vestas, GE and Siemens at the time. There was a lot of opportunity associated with it, but we're not going to necessarily bring in a competitor to them to some degree, just like we're not going to bring in a, I don't know, throw somebody like a US Steel that's going to operate next to Everas, that's going to compete directly with them, because we want to try to keep them successful. And those are just maybe bad examples, they're not, they're not real. But nevertheless, we don't want them to compete neck and neck, so one of them's going to fail and one of them's going to survive.
Okay. No, I think that's good to clarify, because that certainly then is a rumor in the community that, like, once you recruit and are incentivizing, um, you know, a specific sector and they're, and they're representative of that, then you can't recruit something else that's doing a similar product.
No, there's a couple of examples, and I won't, I don't think I, I'm at liberty to say what they would be, but certainly in the aerospace industry, there are some of those that are, you know, high level competition, that if one of them lose a contract, they're going to shut down.
Okay.
You know, that example. We do make sure, because the primary job as a, a primary job, our definition is fifty-one percent, fifty-one percent of the product's got to be exported out of the community. And so if somebody's going to be providing those products locally, but it's not going to be over fifty-one percent. And if we think that they're going to compete with somebody in town that's not necessarily an exporter of products, but there, this happens in the construction-related industry some degree, is that we'll reach out to those companies in town and say, okay, we're looking, talking to this company. They compete on a, you know, this is where we see that they may compete with you, but you tell us if they're going to compete with you, and if you think they are, then essentially we'll back away if we think it, if, if we, if we understand it correctly, because we don't want to hurt local companies that are going to be here. A lot of the time that's happened, we've actually incentivized companies where we've had those conversations with local people, and they say, no, we get it, it's, it's different, um, it may be a little different market, and it's actually opened up opportunities for them to partner too. Yeah.
Counselor Eliot?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, we appreciate it. I just wrote down a couple of notes, that's my understanding when it comes to data centers in particular, that, uh, data centers use up to five million gallons of water a day just to cool their, their computers and so on and so forth. And I'm just wondering, you know, we have this problem when you talk about utility, that our utility rates may, may be high, but maybe with the water, it makes a big difference in, in offsetting some of those utility costs. And the second thing is, is that it's my understanding that a data center can come in to Pueblo and build their own generation. There's no reason for them to even be hooked into our, our current provider. So you, you have an opportunity for that, plus the unbelievable opportunity that Pueblo, uh, presents when it comes to water, I would think would make Pueblo extremely attractive. But again, that's me looking from the outside, not being a part of the process and, and talking to, uh, people that do that. But just based on your information, I just wanted to make that, I, I don't need you to answer.
No, and I can though, actually, it's a, it, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great point, because what we, what we told and, and we put in my testimony and tied to the PUC essentially was that we're not competitive with electric rates on its face, but when we have kind of a blended utility, if we have a good water number attached to it or natural gas, then we're going to be competitive to some degree. When the data centers, when the whole conversations with data centers and AI surfaced, say, had the same thought. Got a lot of water, this is going to be great, we can actually work on this. What they told us is today's data centers don't use a ton of water. They're usually, they're typically not using, and they're not water intensive like they used to be. The AI industries are to some degree. So we're looking at those opportunities as well to see how we can blend it, but you're right. And so what you're going to see, and that's not just here, I mean, you can look at, you can, you can look at the big examples of, of, of the Google, Googles and, and Metas and Facebooks throughout the news. And what you're seeing is they're saying, and that most of the big guys are saying, give us what a power you have, and then we're going to put behind the meter and we're going to generate whatever else we can. So the question that we have, both in the community and the state, is what can they do behind the meter? So what you're finding, um, you know, not to get into the debate on it necessarily, but most of them that are providing behind the meter solutions, um, or what you're seeing, um, on the trend is a lot of conversations on doing some kind of a natural gas or blue hydrogen facility. Or you have the likes of Microsoft, which is opening up Three Mile Island to provide nuclear. Or, uh, Bill Gates opening up nuclear in Wyoming or whatever. So you're seeing a conversation with nuclear and data centers, I'm not necessarily trying to wade into that at this point, but, so the question that we have is the state, and I know you guys just talked about a few, and I think you're scheduled to talk about it later. You know, the, the difference between kind of renewable and how that sets us up versus clean energy and how those dynamics play into it. But it's a conversation we have to have, because the question is, what can we bring in? And what can they generate to those kind of loads that are necessary with the space and availability of electricity? And how they would do that, it's an important conversation. But it's too big of a conversation for us not to have, because of the economic impact of the community is huge. We've got to solve this issue.
And then the only other thought that I had in this, and I've had this, this thought for a lot of years, but I just put it off and put it off and put it off, is that we're thirty-one years into this process, or thirty-two years actually, I think.
Forty, forty-two.
I mean, forty-two, excuse me. It's very frustrating when you have a year like you had this year. And, and over the past, you know, few years, it hasn't been robust. You read things like, uh, you know, El Paso County added fifteen thousand jobs this year, or whatever it was. And so it's no different than in building or economic development or anything. As a city councillor, you obviously have to sit here and you have to ask the questions is, you know, what, what could we do better? And I guess my question that I'm asking is that we really haven't changed or looked at or had a sit down amongst city council, Petco. Now we have a mayor and an administration, uh, that, that's very much involved in this process. What are our processes? What are we doing that doesn't work? How could we do things better? What are the, the, and, and I don't think those conversations have taken place between the three entities. The three entities being council, Petco, and the administration. I mean, are we restricting ourselves in the ballot language? Are we not allowing ourselves enough leeway to be reactive and, and being able to capitalize on opportunities? Is the processes that Petco uses? Because quite frankly, I, I doubt that any of us up here know exactly from the day a phone call comes in or an email comes in, what happens? And how that happens and, and, and the process that takes place, the phone calls that are made, the emails, so on and so forth. So by no means am I trying to diminish, uh, the work that you're doing. I'm just saying it makes smart business sense, in my opinion. If you haven't changed in forty-two years, we, and maybe you have. I, I mean, it, it's probably evolved somewhat from the, from forty-two years ago. But are we doing ourselves a disservice by not getting together with the three entities and saying, you know, let's figure this out? I guess it goes back to the old adage that based on our results, what we're doing is not working. So maybe we ought to try and come up with a game plan between all of us that, that maybe can change the way that the game is, is going. And that we get better results. I may be all wrong and saying, there's nothing we can do, that we're doing it perfectly, and that there's, uh, there's no room for improvement, no room for tweaking, no room for, for anything else. But I find that hard to believe. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there as, as council president, that I know that I believe my colleagues would be very much interested in, in, in maybe delving into that and looking at it. And I, I, I can't speak for the mayor. She would have to say whether she was interested in that or not. And I certainly can't speak for you guys, but I would appreciate that. If maybe we could set up something or come up with a way that we can communicate those things and, you know, try and move forward with it.
No, I, I'm all for the idea. I, I think there's, there's never a downside for the, you know, as I say, economic development's a partnership with the city, the county, um, us, workforce providers, education, everybody, um, is going to take, you know, the community to raise a, you know, to get a business here. And it really does. And I think part of those communication is just helping us, um, understand how to communicate necessarily and how to do this in our world necessarily, where we work in a confidential atmosphere, but help them understand it. You know, example being is that, you know, Black Hills, the rates that we face as a community have been a detriment. Fall back to us to some degree, we haven't been vocal about that, because a lot of times you don't want to communicate that outside of the outside world, because it is so competitive. But as far as best practices, how we should do it, or should we tweak stuff? We, I think those are all valid, valid conversations. What I think the important message, and it's tough for the community, it's tough for me to do, because we do it on a regular basis, is to understand the patience that has to happen in economic development. Like, you know, you, hopefully, and we've got, we never let, we typically never let the community know if, you know, we've been working on a project and it just kind of disappears, it could puts on hold. We don't say anything necessarily, because they come back to us some degree. We have one, a big one right now that we're working on that came back to us from three years ago, that they said it's going to hold, and it's, and enough, they did come hold. And this is what, this is a game changer kind of project. It's tough to talk about some of the, the prospects we're working on a public venue necessarily, but I can tell you, start of the year, I can tell you, moving into March, April, May, June, if I would have, I, I was convinced that the, with the project that we actually had working on, a couple of projects and companies, outside projects that were spending significant resources in the community, that the community had no idea that they were spending, um, you know, excess of millions of dollars in the community to, you know, to, to do the due diligence that they needed to do. And they get put those projects on hold because of, you know, because of a political pressures or political changes. It's a patient game and it's difficult. And I, I understand the community saying, haven't had an announcement this year, what are you guys doing? But parts on us too, to be able to explain to, this is what we're working on. And is there, you know, is there a better way to do it? Is there a better way to reach prospects? We're open to different ideas. So I think a valid conversation always makes sense.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Flores?
I know we have, we have to move on here, but, uh, I don't think, uh, I have the same view. My view is that we had one of the greatest successes within the last two or three years. And I say that because I was intimately involved, because I serve on urban renewal. And that's the Everest project. I don't believe the city understands how big that was and that we have this new long rail company. But I don't believe people knew that there was a potential, if they had moved this plant anywhere else to Texas or Oregon or wherever else they were looking at, we have made, we may have lost the whole mill. Uh, and there was a likelihood that that was going to happen. So I think, I mean, I give you kudos for, you know, for being part of salvaging, uh, our steel plant for probably another fifty years with the investment of over, uh, it's got to be close to a billion dollars now.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the investment on the long rail. And then secondly, we have to remember, we were giving, this was a ballot issue. The voters have certain limitations as to what we can and cannot do. And so we're doing exactly what the voters have given us, uh, as the rules of the game here. And, uh, we have to be careful, that's why we've been successful in, in, in letting the community know that we, we're within these side rails and that we're going to stay there. And sometimes that's not comfortable. I know we could have gotten a lot further, uh, in, in this game of recruitment, had we been able to go outside and do other things. But we have to be very, very conservative when it comes to what the voters allowed us to do.
Oh, very much so. And, 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 and being conservative, you know, the, the Everest project, it was a model project, not just for us, but the site selectors and the site selected guild that I identified, that I mentioned, it was a model project for them. They did fireside talks and communication nationwide about this type of project and how the community came together and how, you know, the city worked with Petco and urban renewal. And how, you know, the city worked with Petco and Urban Renewal and to salvage this and how you actually intertwined Excel Energy into conversation. And so, and how it worked with, you know, putting in solar panels out on their, it was, it was a model project without a doubt. It's easy for us to have, it's easy for the, and I, I get how the, the community can say, you know, there's 45 million, $50 million in an incentive fund that's not being utilized. Those that run businesses and those that are in construction or understand the supply chain and the cost of money out there, projects are expensive. Incentivizing projects has gotten very expensive, playing in infrastructure projects is paying, is very expensive. To locate, you know, the, the total community dollars in an Everest project, when you include the bond issue and, and I don't want to speak for a renewal, but I think with the, with the cash dollars of the city and the, and the, it's probably over a hundred million dollar investment from the community. For us to attract that kind of a project would probably cost cash alone would probably be 50 to 60 million dollars at least. And so when you're talking about these large economic impact numbers with these large, you know, data centers, if you will, that they're going to generate that are two, three billion dollar projects, they're going to generate kind of revenue. These companies are going to demand and expect a large incentive dollars, not necessarily because it's going to make a difference because they need to see the buy-in and you need that to stay in the game. So the fact that the community has been conservative on it and we've been able to accumulate some dollars into it allows us to go after big projects. It allows us to do the infrastructure work that's necessary. Where every other economic development group deals here from in the state and a lot of other communities will say, we need that. We, how did you get that kind of fund? How did you do that? It's a secret to what you guys have. And eventually that's going to make a huge difference to you.
And just to clarify, I, I'm not at all going against what President Aley said. Because I think it's always wise to look at what we're doing, analyze what we could be doing better. But it was just, I, I have, I have a different outlook in the last three years. But I, you know, it's not that I do not, I do not disagree with President Aley. I think we have to do that and all things that we do as a council.
And, and, yeah.
Councilwoman Gomez.
Yeah, just, I guess thinking outside the box, hopefully a little bit here. When you talk about, when you do spec buildings, when you do fencing, are you fencing around some of these buildings, correct?
Yes, uh, yeah.
And do you do things in reference to, again, I'm trying to figure out what, how this works. In reference to operations and or security costs for those buildings, do you provide that as part of that? Would that be part of that service or no?
It could be absolutely. It depends on the deal, but yes.
Okay. So if we look at, and I didn't know this, I just looked it up. Seventy parks within Pueblo, they need a lot of, you know, many of them could use fencing and stuff, but I'm just wondering if we can get the attention of the security industry. Say, look, you know, what, what do you guys need to help? Because we can't have police in everyone. We can't have rangers in everyone. We can't, just, it's impossible. And my big issue is, is the safety and, and starting with the most dangerous places first. And getting the kind of things like whether it's an ATV or, or, you know, whatever it's going to take to get a security company interested in bringing employees into that area. And so we can start securing some of the places that are dangerous. And in the long run, you probably save a lot of money, the city would, from the damage that's being caused right now. I'm just trying to get, I'm thinking out, hopefully not too crazy, but.
Yeah. And so we've looked at that. We're actually continuing. We're, we're currently looking at that at both the airport industrial park and the Menacan industrial park, which majority of, obviously the majority of the manufacturers at the airport industrial park. And so when we hear of an issue, we reach out to all the manufacturers, we'll survey them all to see what kind of an issue they have. We'll try to come up with some kind of a temporary solution first. Right now we're looking at those other options to see, you know, because it's, you know, the budgets are restricted to some degree. What we can afford to have is our manufacturers, really anybody for that matter, but their manufacturers that are having issues with their facility or safety issues, because eventually that stuff gets out to other companies to some degree. But we're concerned about their protection or turns about their property. We've had break-ins on, in the manufacturers out at the airport industrial park, we've had at the Menacan industrial park, we've had it at the St. Charleston industrial park. So that's happening. So we're looking into other ways and just getting the cost model to see what makes the most sense.
Jeff, you're, isn't I bringing it up because we lost a business not too long ago with 18 jobs, doesn't sound like a lot, but he closed down because he got robbed every week. And it was off Santa Fe. And the thing that he was lacking was security and or fence. So that job's now gone. And I'm just trying to figure out, our main obligation is safety. And I just think if we can help.
Yes.
With some of this stuff, maybe we call them, you know, park resource officers, whatever. But there's got to be something we can do collectively, I think.
Yeah, I, I think there is. We're currently looking into it, to be candid with you. We're getting an idea of what else we can do. It's something, when we work with, you know, public development foundation, it's on some buildings out the airport industrial park and has some of their own leases as well. We work in conjunction with them to see what's necessary to make sure how we can keep it somewhat safe. We're currently doing a traffic study at the airport industrial park to get an idea because we have some safety issues with the traffic that's going down the airport industrial parks. We're getting, finishing up a traffic study to get an idea, kind of how to slow some stuff down because that can be a raceway. All that kind of plays into that conversation.
Thank you.
One last thing before we finish. So here's another example. I don't know how we would answer this. But so renewable energies, if we keep that, the renewable energy resolution in place. And for example, since data centers. One of their biggest disadvantages is that they produce greenhouse gas emissions. So they would have to come and provide their own new source of energy infrastructure. I guess renewable in order to operate, kind of like a net zero, right? Otherwise they would be going against our renewable resolution.
It's a, it's a valid question. It's a question that we raised. It's a question that we have as well to see, you know, if, if, if a data center, the AI that wants to generate their own, and they want to follow the same model that other big data centers or other communities are doing. Does renewable mandate cause an issue with that? I think I would submit that to the, to the, to the city attorney's office. Or would switching it to a clean energy type mandate solve that issue? It's a question that I'd ask, but.
Yeah, that would be like a little hiccup there.
Could be, very much so.
Especially if they are high producers of the greenhouse gas emissions. All right. Well, thank you for this evening and we will go ahead and visit with our next guest. We're sorry, this is a work session and we end up having a lot of questions with the people that are in front of us so that we could learn about the decisions, have information on the decisions we'll be making in the future. And with that, we, I'm going to ask the people from the Da Vinci Project to the table. And that is going to be the mayor. And she has a guest with her tonight, but I don't have his name down, so you'll have to introduce the mayor.
Introduce yourself.
Hi.
There you go. You're good.
I don't even know, like.
That's okay. It's, it's been a long day for everybody. First, first and foremost, thank you, council members for your service. As always, your time, my name's Craig Elliott Sisney. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. I'm not sure, I don't think that's the front of the slide deck there. Yep. Nope, nope. There you go.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, council members. I'm here just to give you an exciting update for something that my office, I know several of you and the Urban Renewal Authority and our friends with the Da Vinci Project have been working on for several months. We have a couple of people in attendance in the audience, Joe Ariago. This is his, this is his baby that he brought to light a couple of years ago. I know that some of you have seen this presentation. Previously, they had many different small groups throughout the community to showcase what they're trying to bring to Pueblo. And this is kind of the, the end of the road. And we're going to see on Thursday whether we get the go ahead from the EDC to continue on with this proposal. So this is our presentation that we are going to be presenting to the EDC on Thursday morning in hopes to acquire occupancy for the PBR Sports Performance Center, in which you're all very familiar with. So the timeline that we have here starts off in 2017, when the initial lease was approved between the Bull Riders and Pura. The lease was then executed in 2019 and five years later, the lease has come to an end. Oops, I'm sorry. Bringing us all the way to 2024, we know over the last several years that the PBR Sports Performance Center hadn't been getting the, the volume and the traffic and the tourism dollars that we all once thought we were going to get coming from PBR. So after much discussion, starting in June, Pura and the city decided to terminate the lease agreement with the PBR. The lease was, had concluded with its five years. They were looking for an additional option to continue to rent the space out. But the city and the Urban Renewal Authority decided to not continue and terminated the lease. In early discussions, we tried to figure out what kind of a project or prospect would really work to collaborate with Pura and the city and tourism and the convention center and several different ideas were tossed around. I convened a stakeholder group that included the HARP, the Chamber, Petco, members of the Urban Renewal Authority, the executive director of the Urban Renewal Authority, myself, city attorney Sykes. In order to see what kind of a equitable process we would have to decide who would be the best entity to go into the space. And so after much consideration, Jeff Shaw from Petco put a group of questions together and which was provided to any of the applicants who wanted to potentially be part of the space. At one point we had three prospects, one of the prospects we believed to be not unique and original enough to go into the space. The other prospect decided that it wasn't the best time. And so the last, last prospect that we had that came and presented to the stakeholder group was a Da Vinci Project. After the Da Vinci Project, we believe that this was the best use of space. And that Da Vinci could fulfill the uniqueness of the RTA requirements. So last month, we took the project to the Urban Renewal Authority Board. We essentially got the go ahead to contact the EDC and OEDIT to present this Thursday, the 19th. So some of the questions that were in the project were, that we asked the prospects was, what is your timeline of your project? What is the cap, the company's anticipated capital investment in this project? Describe how this project is extraordinary because it has to be unique in order to meet the RTA requirements. Describe how likely this project will sustain an increase of out of state tourism. So how are we going to bring people into the city to spend money and to visit the site? And describe how this project would not likely tap in in the foreseeable future without being part of the RTA program. As you know, the RTA has very specific, unique requirements to allow to be part of this project. This is the space that we are talking about. I'm not sure if you've all been able to ever visit the RTA, Pueblo Convention Hall, Exhibit Hall, Pueblo Bull Rider, the Bull Rider Sports Performance Center. So this is the end cap as, as you know, that's connected to the convention center and the exhibit hall. This is an aerial view of the space that we are talking about. It's essentially a, a gym space that the Bull Riders were able to visit and use when they were traveling to Pueblo and through Pueblo over the last several years. This is, it's just some quick pictures of kind of the front of the convention center. The smaller pictures around are what the Da Vinci Project would look like if it is allowed to go into the space and kind of what we foresee with the tall glass. It's, it's really the perfect space for what we, what we think that this project, a great home for it. So next, Craig is going to take you on the Da Vinci presentation ride. And this is what we will be presenting on Thursday.
Thank you, Mayor Graham. Some of you have seen the presentation. The good news for all of you who've been up for a long time, it is not 65 slides long. It's much shorter. I'll try to be as succinct as possible. We look forward to entertaining your questions when we're finished. Could not have made it to this point without the person sitting next to us and the support of the Urban Renewal Authority. The folks in Denver as well have been very supportive, people like Ken Burns, documentarian have been supportive. But also just local entities, the folks at HARP, members of the city council, commissioners and just average citizens. So with that, we can tell you that the project is going to be in the space that the mayor described as the Sports Performance Center that has been vacated by PBR and is going to become what you're seeing there. It is going to be based on the ideas of what could be potentially the greatest mind in human history. Those aren't our words, those are Ken Burns' words and Walter Isaacson's words. So he was an artist, scientist, inventor, musician, sculptor, anatomist, engineer and architect. If you don't know much about him and you have a, a slow night because you're snowed in or something, Google his name. And if you want to feel humbled, read about two or three pages of the accomplishments of this person. He's revered around the world as being one of the most proficient minds in many different fields of study. And there are no museums representing his mind and his works of art anywhere in North America. And that will be changing with the Leonardo da Vinci Museum of North America. He did about 25,000 sketches, drawings of all different kinds. So what's interesting is some of those drawings have been of machines and different, I guess, inventions that he came up with. Bless you. And my click, okay, so there's a, a look at a couple of the museums represented in Asia, several museums in Italy. One in Amboise, France, where he lived out the last three years of his life, and then one in Brazil. And again, nothing in North America, not Canada, not Mexico, not the United States. But Pueblo, Colorado will be changing that. It's a recipe for success on a global scale. And here are some of the numbers to prove it. In Italy in 2023, this is last year, 1.7 million euro in income between visitorship and gift shop revenue at the very small museum in Florence, which is only about 7,000 square feet. Amboise, France is on task to have 400,000 visitors through the door. Western Australia had a portable exhibit, just like we will have, that traveled out into the outback of Western Australia. And the population of the city that hosted the exhibition increased by 261%. So cho in South Korea, which is a tourist city on the eastern coast on the Sea of Japan, just opened in 2024. And it has been a model of what the potential of the museums can be. It's been extraordinarily well received. This project isn't something that's new to Pueblo. The machines that were created by the artisans of Florence from Da Vinci's designs have been stored in Pueblo, out of Pueblo Plex for a couple of years. And they have since moved out just in 2024, just this year, to exhibits in Chicago, Detroit, Miami, Los Angeles, New York City and San Diego. There's actually an exhibit that will open in San Diego on January 1st, that we got to travel to Italy at the invitation of the artisans of Florence to see. It's unbelievable. And part of that will be coming here. They had a previous exhibit in San Diego, California, the Air and Space Museum, which was the Galileo exhibit, part of which will be here. It brought in 200,000 visitors and we have a letter of support from the director of the San Diego Air and Space Museum as to the legs that the Leonardo da Vinci name has. Huntsville, Alabama, the Space and Rocket Center had an Archimedes exhibit, which will be here. Tourism and visitation increased 30% over the previous exhibit. And this is an interesting fact based here in Pueblo on city data that was collected by this little city. The 50% of the money spent by tourists when they come to our town is on cultural attractions. And that is very, very important. And I'll talk more about some of that data in a moment. So the museum, first and foremost, is an idea formed by the Southern Colorado Science Center. Our main focus as board members is to benefit the underserved community of children in this community, which by the state's own numbers is the largest section of children anywhere in the state of Colorado that are underserved. This is the San Luis Valley, the Lower Arkansas River Valley, Pueblo, areas of Northern New Mexico and areas from El Paso County to the south. When we met with the city, when we met with the state, we showed them their own slide that pointed to how much money they don't give to this part of the state and how much the kids need it. So that was our main goal, was the children. The museum's going to have three components. It's going to have the Leonardo da Vinci Museum of North America, but it's also going to have a Steamworks Interactive Science Center. It will also have a permanent Leonardo da Vinci Sports Science exhibit. And then also in the extended future, two to five years from now, there'll be expansion on to HARP as we add the Krista McAuliffe Planetarium, which will be an exciting addition and growth on the Riverwalk, which everybody wants. So that is something that HARP was very interested in and one of the reasons they threw their support behind the project. Now, I won't go through all of these for the sake of time, but we did do a feasibility study very in-depth in early 2023 as to how to make this possible. It included the idea of building our own building, retrofitting another building, and then also using a building that already existed. And the best buildings usually in the world are the ones that are already standing. And so that's how we identified the Bull Riders building through the feasibility study. It had cash flow projections, numbers of employees, revenue and operations, operational expenses, population demographics and market feasibility. And we can present that to you as we will be presenting it to the EDC in detail when we talk to them on Thursday morning. Benefits to Colorado are kind of self-explanatory, things Pueblo needs, tax revenue, job creation, increase in out of state tourism, international recognition, collaboration, innovation. I'll say that one again, international. collaboration, innovation. I'll say that one again, international recognition. This is a museum unlike anything that's ever been seen in this country because it doesn't exist until now. It's not going to be New York. It won't be Chicago. It won't be Miami. It won't be Los Angeles. It will be Pueblo, Colorado. Open seven days a week because, as we know, there are underserved children in this community that need a place to go on Mondays when a lot of holidays occur and on Fridays because school is out, and we will be available for that seven days a week. We're working very closely with Kevin Ortiz and the good folks at the convention center to increase the flow of new opportunities for them because of our existence in that space. So we look forward to those collaborations as well as with the Chamber of Commerce for the Chili Fest. We're also talking about local, regional, national, and international tourism, educational partnerships that we've already have been able to create through partnerships in Italy already with Colorado State University, which have been very exciting, and we'll be able to announce those pretty soon. And then also the interest in STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. With that said, we will be generating revenue because of admissions, obviously, gift shop and in-store sales as well as an online presence. We're going to have something called Cafe Leonardo, which will be out on the Riverwalk space itself. Then eventually the Planetarium, the interactive STEAM exhibits, manufacturing museum pieces and gift shop products, which we want to engage local manufacturers in the community for job creation, but also increase revenue from sales from them for manufacturing products that will be for sale in the museum. Once you see a picture of those on the right, those are taken from pictures from our recent trip from the museum pieces that they actually sell in Florence. We've also been engaged by foundations and reached out to sponsorships, individual donors and grants, and we're happy to announce that we have a major donor standing by to kick off the capital campaign. That will be started once with fingers crossed that we get a warm reception, which we're expecting from the folks at the EDC. One of the most interesting statistics is that 3% is the very small number of people that visit Pueblo. The majority of people that come to Pueblo are from the state of Colorado. Of those 3% of visitors that come to Pueblo from different states, most are from Texas, some from New Mexico. Interestingly enough, as far away as California, Florida, and Arizona, most of them are wanting to visit the historic Arkansas Riverwalk and the Union Avenue Historic District. And you can see many of them stay about a day, but some stay multiple days. They do spend money on things like gas, food services, transit, et cetera. But they also spend money on accommodations, and they also spend money on retail. We have a lot more of those data points as well that we can share if necessary. So we did an additional marketing survey and plan, and our goal is, at best, hopefully, and this is a modest number, to attract about 12,000 out of state tourists within the city of Pueblo within the first year, an annual multimedia marketing budget of anywhere from 120 to 300,000. Then we want to maximize Pueblo's location along the Front Range as cities to our north have been able to monetize those spaces along the major interstate thoroughfare very easily, and Pueblo has not. We want to target families that plan in vacations, but we also want to target families in Pueblo to stay in Pueblo and give them reasons to be proud of the Steel City. We want to focus on travelers from nearby states, obviously, based on the numbers. We have gotten a verbal confirmation that the world-renowned documentarian Ken Burns will be in Pueblo for the museum opening in 2025. We're also going to attract visitors through rotating exhibits. So the artisans of Florence have made about 270 of the machines that were the drawings of Leonardo da Vinci. We have about 80 or 90 of them here in Pueblo. We actually took them to show them when we met with Ken Burns, and he was fascinated and didn't even know they existed. So as they make new machines, those will come to Pueblo. They will be out on the Riverwalk for people to touch and climb around on. They'll also be inside the museum for young people and old people alike for them to interact with. This was just a picture from our meeting with Ken recently in Denver. His documentary that came out on Leonardo da Vinci came out in November and was widely received globally with rave reviews from the New York Times to interviews and television appearances on every major network, including international television appearances as well. So to have his name as a driving force of support behind the project does not hurt. Anytime you can throw Ken Burns into a sentence and the city of Pueblo, that makes for a good conversation. We feel very, very good about that. It's some of the other relationships we have. Okay, so essentially, the sports tourism aspect is there's been questions about USA Boxing, and we're going to be encroaching on that facility and that space. They use the exhibit hall space and very seldom use any part of the Sports Performance Center, and very seldom was it ever used for anything. So what we're going to do is we've already reached out to the convention center to let them know we want to make them a part of the space and have them use as much of the space as they need when they're in town, but also help, help Kevin and his team bring different sports-related events, including cheerleading competitions, karate competitions, you name it. We'll have the ability to help accommodate those and work in collaboration and not against the wonderful work they're doing at the convention center. There will be, as I said, a permanent exhibit of the science of sport. Again, I encourage you to read a little bit about Leonardo da Vinci and see why that makes sense. Collaborate, collaboration. This could be a whole presentation in itself. As this project has come out, we have been engaged by organizations from around the world, also within the state of Colorado, destination management organizations or DMOs. Some great reception from members of your group on the city council, county government as well, regional partners, state of Colorado, the state fair individuals, and the collaboration opportunities with the university, PCC, and then also an international educational curriculum being developed through the artisans of Florence could be extra special in helping bring international students to study here in Pueblo. And the director, or I should say, the president of Colorado State University Pueblo has already said that if possible, he could make in-state tuition possible for international students who come to study as part of the presence of a Leonardo da Vinci museum in our community. So we're a nonprofit. It was formed in 2023. That man back there, Joe Orego, was the driving force behind of it, behind it, and still is, although he never wants any credit, which is understandable. Feasibility study was completed. The artisans of Florence formed a Colorado-based company. I'll say that again. We work closely with attorneys and those gentlemen in that picture there. That was from our trip to Italy for the Da Vinci Flight exhibit that is going to San Diego on January 1st. We helped them form a Colorado company to have them express to Pueblo and to the state. They have a very profound interest in making this project a reality. So we've done in the economic impact study, that was from Dr. Mike Wakefield, an independent study from his team. We have those numbers that we can present as well, and I'll talk about that in a second. And we're working on finalizing an MOU with the artisans of Florence to give Pueblo the exclusivity for the only North American museum for a timeframe. And then after that expires, an MOU that would give us exclusivity within 600 kilometers of the state of Colorado to protect the influence and the name and the rights to the very first Leonardo da Vinci museum anywhere in the United States. So this is just a brief overview. Mayor Graham touched on the space itself. Museum footprints, about 18,000 square feet, but the underutilized space is outside, and that's where Leonardo da Vinci's Cafe Leonardo would go. It's multiple thousands of square feet, and then also the expansion onto the Riverwalk of the Planetarium. We anticipate a renovation budget of about half of a million, exhibit construction to get the artisans of Florence up and running with us in the Da Vinci Museum of about another half of a million dollars, and 18 months of operating capital of about $1 million. And we are very, very confident in being able to open the museum late spring, early summer, not 2030, not 2028, but 2025. Okay, so essentially what we're going to talk to the EDC about is the approval to use the entire 18,000 square foot space of the historic Arkansas Riverwalk, which was originally occupied by the now vacant Sports Performance Center as the new location of the Leonardo da Vinci Museum of North America. And I can't believe I'm even saying that, that this could be possible for our community. But it's with that, we say thank you. We entertain as many questions as you may have and appreciate your consideration.
Any questions from council? Councilor Gomez?
Well, I can't see one downside to this thing that you've just mentioned. It's, this is glorious stuff, man. You talk about Renaissance, you look at the library, Andron Predok, the most famous architect probably internationally, and we have it here in Pueblo. There's no reason why we can't have this kind of stuff. And the fact that you talked about underserved children, and this is open seven days a week, and it just blows my mind. I don't know, maybe Pueblo can be recognized one day as the Renaissance city, who knows? But the upsides on this thing are just incredible, and I just think the international recognition for Pueblo off the charts. But I just want to, I don't have any questions. I usually would try to find something that's in there that I'm not looking, but I can't see anything that's on the downside in this thing. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Just a real brief comment. One of the points that we made very clear to the EDC and to OEDIT is that this project will fulfill and exceed the expectations of the RTA that didn't work out. It was one of the first RTAs of its kind anywhere in the state of Colorado. We want to put an exclamation point on proving that that RTA can be successful with this project.
Councilor Martinez?
Yeah, thanks. How exciting.
Very exciting.
So what does working capital mean?
Working capital, as in the
A million dollars.
Yeah, a million dollars, just the operations, day-to-day operations of the museum.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure we have a million dollars in the bank. So if we're going to run the museum for a period of 18 months, that we know we can pay for everything from
But it's like all operating expenses?
Operating expenses, absolutely.
For the Planetarium, is that the same Planetarium that was in Centennial?
Yes, it was saved by a brilliant group of people. We collaborated with them to make sure it was going to be protected. And actually, in the plans that we have for the future, the Planetarium will be much larger than the space that exists, existed at Centennial. And we've already started to collaborate with other Planetariums around the country, and they've expressed so much interest that they've actually offered us programs that they're using to be shown at the Planetarium. The Planetarium will show laser light shows, Planetarium exhibits for kids, but it'll also be rentable after hours for groups who want to have birthday parties or wedding receptions or all kinds of stuff.
Great.
Yes.
Actually, and Christmas shows too. I remember watching a Christmas show at the Centennial Planetarium.
Yeah, there's a, the, the, unless you're an astronaut, and they say the sky's the limit, the sky's not the limit in this case.
For that expansion on the Riverwalk, is the Riverwalk going to be paying for that expansion of the Planetarium? Or is that going to be this group?
To be determined. So that is in the long-range plans, and that would be something that, you know, there's so many moving parts with regional, anything that happens in a space that is the historic Arkansas Riverwalk project. So we work in collaboration, which we've already started to do with the folks with the Riverwalk, with Lynn Clark and her folks. They're excited about the future, and where there's really no way to project like where it would go and how big it would be at this point. Just that that's our, our intent is to try to promise that that's one of the things we want to bring to the table with the project is it's not just going to open and be a museum, it's going to be a living, breathing entity with changing exhibits that will expand as the Riverwalk expands.
Is the installation of the Planetarium contingent on the expansion?
Say that again.
Is the
I just want to make sure I understand you. I don't, I don't think so, but I want to make sure I understand the question.
The Planetarium that we just discussed?
Yes.
Is that contingent on the expansion?
No.
Okay.
I see what you're saying. No, there's, there's probably usable space in some way, shape, or form. Yeah, and we've actually had talks that it could be part of a remote location with an educational organization, and that's all I can say.
And I know that you talked about Dr. Wakefield's study. He does great work. Do you have the projected revenue on a, either a day-to-day?
We do, and it, could you put the presentation up? Because I must have double punched right by it because we do, we have. He did three scenarios. He did a worst kind of middle-of-the-road and best-case scenario. And I actually have, let's see, if you go back marketing, it was in there. It's not in the slide. Okay. Essentially, I can paraphrase some of it, but he said worst-case scenario would be around $1.4 million in annual revenue in the first year of operation with an expected rate of hiring of employees of 16.5 employees. Middle-of-the-road scenario would be about 18 employees with about $1.7 million in revenue. Best-case scenario would be around $2.4 million, I believe, is the number is correct in his best-case scenario. He thinks probably the most realistic scenario after five years of operation, that the annual revenue just from the museum, not, not taking into consideration a couple of other components because we didn't have a building space, obviously, to base the study on, was going to be around $1.8 million per year.
Great.
And apologies that that slide didn't show up for some reason.
Thanks.
Uh, Councilor Latino?
Thank you. I, I want to compliment you all for this. I think this is a wonderful thing that will be coming to this community. I was at the announcement, the formal announcement at the Country Club, and Pueblo's the home of heroes. And Joe and Craig and, and the group, I, I think this is a wonderful thing that my, my concern with all of this is is advertising because we have the Riverwalk, which again is a, a real gem that we, we haven't done a whole lot of advertising about. And so that, that's the key for me in terms of getting the word out what we have in this community in terms of, 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 of something that is special or things that are special. So I'm, I'm really for this, and I'm excited about this. I really
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Alif?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you for that presentation. That's like the 12th time I've seen, but it's
I know, that's why, that's why I said something at the beginning, Mark, like I know some of you have seen this a lot. This is a much shorter presentation, and I tried as fast as I could to get through.
You did good, and obviously, everybody needed to hear that. You know, I got to admit, you know, I was raised a cowboy, and he came to me and, and, and gave me the presentation one-on-one several months ago. And I had personally a whole different idea about how that that, that Sports Performance Center should go. And I told him, I go, you know, hey, this is a great idea, but yeah, I'm not supporting this at all because I want sports camps. I want this, I want that. And I can tell you that after all of the presentations, after listening to, to what this means to the community, I was sold. You know, I got cultured real quick, and I became a Da Vinci fan. So this is a big deal. I'm, I'm very supportive of it, but I have to ask the hard question of you know, we haven't heard from anybody what you're going to pay in rent. We haven't heard, are you asking the city for anything? Is there, is there, once it's approved, are you going to come back to us and say, hey, we need $5 million to make this happen? I think those need to be fleshed out.
That's a great question, Councilman Alif. One of the things that's in the works is the negotiations for the lease. We will not, and OT, not be asking for a lease equivalent to the gift that was given to PBR. We will be paying a rate and actually offering to pay a rate that is substantially five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10s, 10 times higher on a monthly basis than the previous tenant. This is going to be a good deal, and we will be in no way, shape, or form asking for a handout with this project. We can assure you of that. If there's half-cent sales tax money, fine. We, we, we came to this project strictly with the idea that if we can't kind of do this on our own unfunded and make it possible, then it's really going to be very hard. So building a building was impossible because of the multiple millions of dollars and the time that it would take. That's why the PBR building made sense. But we knew if we couldn't self-fund and fundraise and ask for donations and foundations to kick in and make it possible on our own, then it really didn't give us the right to ask the community for any money. If the community wanted to give money, that's fantastic, but a lot of it so far has been through the, the checkbooks and required minimum distributions that people are giving from their IRAs to make this a possibility.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
When I went to the presentation at the Country Club, I could just, I mean, I was ecstatic over this. I still am ecstatic over it. I have
Thank you.
Since I have a nine-year-old, since he could speak, has always worked from a scientific engineering brain. That's how he operates with everything that he does. And so for this to come into our community and have a place for him to go and continue to exercise that brain and educate that brain is just amazing. You know, his dream is to be an aerospace engineer.
And that is, that is our goal. I mean, that's always been the goal of the, the nonprofit is children, children first. They're so underserved in this community. Most of them never heard of Leonardo da Vinci. There'll also be Galileo exhibits. There'll be exhibits from Archimedes, on and on and on, and we'll actually have traveling exhibits that will go out to underserved communities who don't have the resources to bring their self, kids to the museum. So we can take these flat pack exhibits and the machines from Leonardo da Vinci, set them up and let the kids interact with them, and hopefully light that spark of innovation in their minds like what happened to Leonardo da Vinci in the 1400s.
And do you, are you still having the Training and Educational Center to go along with that? I, I didn't see that here in the, would that still be taking place? I mean, you said, I think at the Country Club, they had said that there would be like a trick, Training and Educational Center for the kids to attend.
Yes. So there's going to be multiple components from an educational standpoint, and we can do a whole presentation on that because we're working with the artisans of Florence. And an educator that's based in Australia for an interactive curriculum that will be digitally based to go out through the entire world to educate kids, not just in our own community, but bring them into the fold with the museum and the different museums around the world. So yes, we'll be communicating with the other museums. There'll be an innovation collaboration with people from Pueblo going to other countries. And then their artisans coming over to Pueblo as an exchange. In fact, the museum in South Korea was so well received that they sent 30 of their finest classical musicians to go play for the governor of Tuscany. We actually met with one of the representatives of the governor of Tuscany on this project. And as a thank you, sent 30 of their finest musicians to play because they were so overwhelmed by the response in the museum in South Korea. And I apologize, Mayor Graham, I'm not giving you much time to jump in.
The second thing that I was really ecstatic about is that you said that, or in the presentation, you were saying that you are self-funding, that you're not looking for additional funds, that you're not looking for anything from, you know, any funds coming from the city.
We're always looking for funds. Don't be, don't be deceived. If we're a museum and a nonprofit, but we want the community to have skin in the game. We want foundations, which we've been, you know, interacting with not only locally, but around the country to be involved as well and corporate sponsors. But yes, this is a monumental undertaking, but when you look at the numbers of what it will cost to make this possible. And then Jeff was just here talking about some of the multimillion dollar projects. For the name recognition and international exposure this could bring to the community for such a small dollar amount of investment, whether it's from a local person or a international company, it's pennies on the dollars for the benefit that this could reap the community. And for the state, by the way.
Because when we're looking at somewhere between a, did you say 1.4 and a 2.4 million dollar budget, operating budget? Is that what?
So one point, no, it's actually the revenue that could be generated by the operations of the museum. And that was Dr. Wakefield's study that showed those numbers from worst case to best case scenario.
So what's your costs?
Yeah, so the operating budget is just as an example, which is a very good question. Thank you. About a million dollars for the first 18 months is what we have kind of as a, as a goal. We're going to start a capital campaign. And as I said, we've got a major donor standing by. Once we do get the green light for the space and everybody's happy and we've fulfilled all the obligations that the community expresses of us, to get the space and that, that major donor will, will get the campaign started.
Yeah, because the other thing is, is that we haven't talked, you know, the business side of it.
Sure.
For council.
Sure.
And what they have to, to approve here in the future, and that would be the lease agreement. And, you know, for years, the council has been putting their name and agreeing to a lease agreement that's been way under market.
Oh, way under market.
And then, you know, you're getting, you know, we're having to cover other expenses like utilities and so forth, all paid for with tax dollars.
For a building that sat empty for months and months and months.
For a multimillion, you know, multimillion dollar building to cost to construct on tax.
Yes, so we, we hope to fulfill the RTA and, and make it better. And we actually did propose, kind of follow up on your question, we did propose back in February of this year, a template for what we were thinking would be the way forward in the discussions for the budget and the lease agreement. We are prepared to sign a 10-year agreement with the contingency for 20 more years to the city for a total of 30 years. That's how profound we feel this project is and the commitment we want to make. But also you got to meet them, the artisans of Florence, when they came into Pueblo. They were just here, they'll be back in February. And as another marketing standpoint, Councilman Latino, the foremost expert or one of the foremost experts on Leonardo da Vinci in the world is a scholar by the name of Sarah Tagliagamba. We had lunch with her in Italy and we've already forged a relationship. So she will be here in February and we have been in talks with some educational facilities to have her be a resident scholar at the university and bring scholars and students from other parts of the world to study under her. So when it comes to marketing, she's going to be a pretty easy, pretty, pretty easy marketing piece based on the fact that she's written 11 books about Leonardo da Vinci. So hopefully that answers your question a little bit about the lease.
And so, well, let's go logistically, okay? We're going, you're going in front of the state tomorrow?
Thursday, Thursday morning.
Thursday? And we don't have a lease agreement in place, right? Correct. And then we go in front of the state and the state says, oh yeah, we're going to do this, we're going to give them, you know, we're going to allow all of this to happen. But then you come back to the table to try to negotiate, what if that doesn't work? Why wouldn't we negotiate first?
So the first issue is we can't have a lease agreement unless we get the blessing of the organization that, that made that building possible. We feel out of respect for the state, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. So if they do give us the blessing, then we know we can proceed. And our council has kind of given us that guidance that it's probably best to go to the state and show them the proof is in the pudding. Give them the information, get the blessing for the building and then proceed. Essentially, the state, what they asked us, Councilmember, is that they said, we just need you to come with the numbers to prove that you can do it. And more importantly than anything, just come to us on a unified front from all levels of the city and the county that everyone is behind this, and then we can give the blessing for the building. And then it was at that point out of respect for them that we would proceed with the lease agreement.
Well, you don't have to have an agreement, but you should have it part of your operating cost, right? So you have an
Oh, yeah, we, we do.
Like we know what that's going to be, you guys know what it's going to be.
But we didn't have a building and that was a problem. So we had it in the feasibility study with fingers crossed based on that space, knowing that we had about $10 per square foot at least in there in our numbers. But we didn't have a building, so we couldn't go negotiate anything because we didn't have a building. And so that's when the state said, well, just come to us and if we can sign off on it, then you can proceed with kind of everything else that you need. So it was kind of like the cart before the horse. So it wasn't on purpose that we weren't wanting to negotiate. It's just we couldn't negotiate for a building that we didn't have the blessing for.
Now I recognize who you are. All right, Counselor Flores.
You know, I'm all in on this project.
Thank you for your support.
And I, and I'll be there Thursday also.
Thank you.
Provide the support. But has OED at all indicated how long it's going to take them to make a decision?
They didn't say for certain. We've met with them a couple of times and we did a dry run of the presentation last week. And they said it could be as soon as that day that they would go into an executive session, have discussions and come and give us the yay or the nay. So it potentially could happen on Thursday is what we're hoping for.
But basically it's going to happen relatively soon.
Correct.
And we've also gotten some very positive feedback from two or three of the members of the EDC already, because they have knowledge of the project. It just kind of filtered through the grapevine and they heard about Ken Burns. And so it's not something that is going to come to most of them as out of the blue.
And we'll probably find out on Thursday.
Yeah.
How long that time.
Sure.
Right. Well, thank you for all your hard work. I know you guys
No, thanks necessary. It's, it's honestly, and we mean this, every board member of the Southern Colorado Science Center making this possible. It's, it's for the future generations and the success of the city, which are the young people like our nine-year-old sons, my almost 18-year-old daughter, my 15-year-old son, and the help of people like the mayor and members of the city council and members of the community. So thank you.
Grandson.
Grandson, sorry.
Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, I didn't think I'd ever meet anybody who has more passion than a guy by the name of Andy Sanchez from the San Francisco Arts and Conference Center. Have these guys met each other yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been a long, 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 longtime friends with Andy and I'm in a club with him once a month on Mondays. And Pueblo's lucky to have Andy.
Yay, you, you guys are good. How, I just, I'm still shocked that this is the North American place to be in reference to Leonardo da Vinci. How did you pull this off?
So I talked to one of the major funders of a project called The Hyperloop and he lives in Switzerland. But he's very familiar with the city of Pueblo. And when I explained this project to him, he literally fell off his chair and in his Swiss accent, he said, Pueblo? As in, Pueblo?
Wow.
Not New York, not Los Angeles, not Seattle? And I said, no, Pueblo, we're going to change the image of the city, one child at a time, because of a man who deserves a place in history above probably any other human ever to walk on this earth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Latino, did you do something else?
Yeah, I'm excited to see that the planetarium is going to be re-revived, you know, I'm excited about that.
They have an army of supporters, city, the city of Pueblo can be proud of Bulldog Nation in Pueblo should be very proud because that planetarium was a gem and the fact that it could have disappeared and those people got behind it. And it's been able to hopefully find a home in the museum is, is going to be fantastic.
I know one bulldog that's up there smiling.
Of course you do.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, I, I think that's everything for this evening.
Counselor Maestro, we will provide the Zoom link to if any of you are interested in supporting through the meeting on Thursday. We believe we'll be on, we don't know, the meeting is from eight to 12, so I'm not sure what time we'll be on. So we'll be standing by, but I can have Alyssa, Tracy reach out to any of you if you want to participate or early listen in. And we'll make sure that the EDC and OED know that we've came here tonight and that the council is happy and, and excited. And we hope to share some good news Thursday evening. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, so we have two items left on the agenda. And the next one is going to be by presentation by Counselor Roger Gomez, motion to reconsider resolution rescinding resolution number 13612, adopted February 13th, 2017.
Yeah, I'm just looking for reconsideration on that vote that I made.
Yeah, Mike.
Reconsideration on the make vote that I made mistakenly last week. And, and it's going to be a resolution, I believe, in the ordinance and associated ordinance as well. But as far as my, my viewpoints in reference to the zero renewable options, I think I've been pretty clear tonight on how I felt about it, but that's short and sweet part of that. And I'm looking for reconsideration on that vote down the road here. Excuse me? I want to make a motion to reconsider that resolution. I don't know the number, was it 13612, I believe?
It's right down your thing. 13612.
Okay, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider number, resolution, excuse me, resolution number 1362, adopted February 13th, 2017.
So sorry, to be clear, you want to reconsider the resolution rescinding that resolution?
I'm sorry, I forgot the word. Yes.
So there's a motion?
That would be my motion.
Second. Are you seconding or asking for a second? Okay, thank you.
Now, was there an associated ordinance to that as well?
So we were going to, we're going to vote on the motion to, to reconsider, the motion, the second. And to be clear, this is just to revisit this ordinance at the next meeting. So this is only a vote to reconsider, this is not a vote to pass that resolution. So if you'd like to call for the vote, we'll to reconsider. Yes.
That's what I thought.
To reconsider, yes, you're not voting on the resolution itself, but there is.
Yeah, so if I may, Appendix 8 of Section 29 allows any member of council who voted in favor of a prevailing vote to then make a motion to reconsidered any regular meeting or special meeting and for the purposes of the appendix and Section 14, a work session or a meeting of the executive committee is considered a special meeting. So it can be brought at a special meeting within, I believe, 10 days of the original vote, which was seven days ago. So it is allowed. And what you will be voting on is, as the city clerk said, to place this on the agenda to discuss and vote on again, basically to redo the vote. That's why it's a reconsideration.
Got it.
Counselor Flores.
I just want some clarification here. Did we get proper notice to the public?
The, this was noticed with, I think, I'll just let the clerk address that.
Yes, this was noticed in the work session and this is just the motion to recon, for reconsideration. So again, the ordinance itself, or the, the resolution, excuse me, itself will be on the December 2023rd agenda. And it will be noticed on that agenda again.
actuality, this is not a reconsideration. I don't hear that. I hear that you want to change your vote because you think you made a mistake.
At that next meeting, correct? Okay.
Are we all going to have an open mind on this or is this just the formality that you're going to change your vote?
No, he, he just wants to bring it to in front of council for consideration, reconsideration. That's all he's asking for.
Right.
Well, that, so then that would be for council to vote on.
We were going to vote on it tonight. I was, I'll be honest with you.
Voting on it tonight, we're only voting for it to go in front of the meeting. And if it's noticed, it was noticed on Friday when this agenda was sent out.
Counselor Gomez, at the beginning of this, you said that you made a mistake in voting.
Correct.
You're, so then you're implying that you're going to be switching your vote. That's, that's what you're implying when you said I made a mistake. This is bizarre. In my three years of council, I, this is the first time that I've ever had to navigate this. I didn't think that council was able to do formal, as I was served as work session chair for two years. I was not aware that council could have the power to do this in a work session, that we could be tackling something so formal in a work session. So one, this is bizarre. Two, you've already admitted on the mic tonight that you made a mistake in voting, which is implying that you're going to change your vote at the next regular meeting regardless of
So then how do you do it in 10 days?
I'm not done talking. Third, I, I, I have now lost my train of thought.
Okay, how do you do it in 10 days then? If the meeting was seven days ago and the 10 days is in three days from now?
I was going to say for third, um, third, you know, it's, it's our job as a city council to come to a meeting prepared to do our homework.
We make mistakes. I don't want to be scolded by you.
I
Thank you.
I do not appreciate that you're talking over me multiple times.
I don't, you're scolding me because I made him, I, I brought that out because it said for me to present.
Why didn't you say anything the night of then?
I'm not going to answer that because right now you're trying to scold people in front of the rest of the dais and I'm not going to let you get away with that.
So actually, Counselor Gomez went to the proper people, the clerk and the attorney to settle this. He didn't just say, hey, I want to put this on the work session agenda. He went under the guidance of the attorney and the clerk. That's who we look to, who we look to for our guidance for the proper way to do it.
Has this process ever been in your time on council, has it?
It has not, that has not been, there, it has not, but it's also not been brought forward by any counselor who has decided that, or decided or had the right, has the right, he has the right to do this, correct? He has the right to change his mind, correct?
Yes, within the 10-day period.
Within the 10-day period of the charter, so he's exercising that right.
I'm just, I, you know, I, I, I hope that we all take this job so incredibly seriously and that we come to council, we're ready to vote, that we, that we're ready to listen to the public, that we're ready to listen to staff reports, that we do our homework, that's, that's the expectation that I put on myself. And I, I hope that moving forward, I recognize that we all make mistakes. But when it comes to our vote, that is so precious and, and such a power bestowed on us that it's this, that this whole thing is bizarre. And I, I don't
Is this pulling down yet?
I don't, I don't know.
You can stop now.
Counselor Flores.
I, I want, this to me is really important that the public understands what's happening here. And it, it looks like Roger went through all the right process. But what's happening tonight is that as a result of this change of vote, we are going to eliminate our Energy Commission Committee. That's going to happen at the next meeting. And we're also going to lose the resolution that was passed in 2017 in which we had set a goal for clean energy for 2035. That's what's happening right now. And it's just, we're just going through some motions here, but ultimately that is going to be the conclusion at the meeting. I, I don't think there's, everybody's made up their mind now they're going to vote. But that's, I, I just want the public to know exactly what just happened. Is that this vote is going to be turned backwards to 4-3, that we eliminate our Energy Commission and that we eliminate the resolution, setting the goal at 2035. That's just so everybody understands.
Well, that statement can be corrected.
Yes.
Because, and, and in the sense that nothing was planning on eliminating the Energy Commission. It was just revising their scope of work.
Technically, it was just to move it to, it was just to move it to second reading. That, that's actually what we, what we voted, voted down was it was a first, it was a first reading. So technically, that's what we, that's what was voted down to move it to second reading.
I'm talking about the Energy Commission's change of role and their scope of work. We're not It, we're not, the vote is, was not to eliminate. The, the energy commission, correct? It was just to change their scope of work.
Correct, and and that, that is on first reading, so it would be on first reading again. Um, next, next Monday night and it would have final reading and public hearing for anyone that wanted to come. And comment on that item for the, the first meeting in January.
And secondly, Counselor Gomez has admitted a mistake here. So whether it's changing for, you know, on the fi, on the final vote this time, he's admitting his change of mistake. So we're not changing any, we're, all we're, all he's doing is trying to correct himself. That's all he's trying to do. And I don't think that we need to go through a lesson, an intimidation. Uh, a negative reflect, anything on his choices or what he's trying to do here. And his responsibilities to serve his district.
Counselor, um, President Aliff, did you have something?
Well, I think you ju, you just said it all and literally if we're going to, to. Take this serious, if we make a mistake, you should admit to your mistake. And the code of ordinances, it's not in the charter, it's in the code of ordinances, allows a city counselor to do this. And. You know. Everybody is fallible. And everybody can make a decision that uh, on the spur of the moment. Uh, didn't understand how it was uh, worded, whatever, however that happens. And when you realize that and you're already two ordinances down or three resolutions down, you can't stop the proceedings and go back. So there has to be a remedy. There has to be a remedy to fix something that you screwed up. And this is how it's done. This is merely putting it back on the agenda and taking another vote. That's all it is.
Okay, all right, so um, we can proceed with a, a motion. And a vote on this motion, correct, in order to reintroduce the ordinance, which would be very similar to a consensus. Right? Because we're heading a consensus to put it back on the. In, in a sense.
I don't think you're gonna get a consensus vote, so I would prefer to um, do an actual vote if, if that's all right by you, Chair.
If that's allowed. Let's proceed. Yes, uh, Counselor.
Just so I'm clear. If we vote yes, which me, that means that we're gonna go back and and bring it up again. Is that correct?
It's going to be on the agenda to be voted on. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Call for the vote.
You can do roll call. Go ahead. Chris, save a roll call. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
No.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
No.
Motion passes five-two. Uh, we have an item F, motion to reconsider an ordinance amending chapter five of title two of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to the Pueblo Commission on Energy.
Okay, um. I make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, the motion has to be made by someone that was on the prevailing side.
Oh, okay.
Uh, motion to reconsider an ordinance amending chapter. Excuse me, I can't read it. Um. Five, excuse me, chapter five of the title two of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to the Pueblo Commission on Energy.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor um. Flores.
Yeah, this, this uh, ordinance basically changes this, the uh, the, the structure of the committee. It's not as though the committee is going to have the same kind of uh. A platform. I, I think it really weakens the committee. And so uh, someone said it was just, we weren't taking, we were still gonna leave the committee together. It's new configuration under this is gonna look a lot different. And I think it's gonna lessen their power to do some of the things that they've been doing, especially with their grant work. And a lot of stuff. I just wanted to say that because I. Um, I'm, I, I would have liked to have seen them stay in the same structure. Uh, especially now that we would probably headed toward getting rid of the resolution uh, that we passed back in two thousand seventeen.
Counselor Martinez.
Harley, when was this last, this procedurally, when was this last done among council?
Oh, I, I have no idea.
Carla?
So let me just make sure I'm understanding your question. You want to know the last time council reconsidered like this? Or when this was actually passed as a rule under the ordinances?
When um, a formal vote was taken in a work session to re, to a motion to reconsider. Within the ten days of the vote.
So I am not aware of, of this happening. I personally am not aware. It could have happened in the past. But remember, the vote that you're taking is not to whether or not to reconsider the substance of the resolution.
Right, it's just to revisit.
It's just to put it back on the agenda so that you can revisit it and you'll have a public hearing. You'll be able to discuss the substance of it. Um, so all of that is going to happen again. It's just a vote to put it back on to the agenda.
Um, I understand all of that. I'm asking for an example. Um, of when this process has been implemented in the past.
I am not aware.
I haven't seen, formally seen it implemented like this, but I have seen where counselors have been absent. And that topic or that subject has lost. And then they've come back from being absent and reintroduced it and then it's for it to pass, so.
Council members have the ability to, to reintroduce. So I've seen that happen, but I haven't seen this process before.
And I, and I get that. I guess where my frustration is. So, I mean, I'm several, I'm frustrated on several things, but the fact that I, it like this is, this process has been codified in the code of whatever. For X amount of time and we're just learning as council members that it's our ability, our power to do this.
Yes, so since uh, it was originally. Let me start over. So appendix A, section twenty-nine was originally put into the legislative procedures in nineteen seventy-three. So whether it's happened in that time, I, I'm not aware. Uh, I just wouldn't know.
Okay, call for the vote.
Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores? Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
No.
Motion passes five-two. Was this to the executive session?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Discussion with outside counsel regarding pending PUC case twenty-four AL dash zero-two-seven-five E. Involving Black Hills Electric.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, any opposed?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'll second it too. We already know, we already know.
There's your chance size. She's loading.
She's active.
It is 9:25 on December 16, 2024 and we are adjourning this work session.